Good morning. We are going to call the morning work session of the Clickcat County Board of County Commissioners to order, and we will begin with our Public Works Director.
Morning.
Good morning.
We only have one item on your consent agenda this week, and that is a reimbursable work agreement between the county and the Lisle School District, and this is for work that may or may not be done, but the agreement will be in place in case things are needed. Construction program, Small Works Guard Rail Project should be complete this week, and then that project will be done. That's all the repair work, and we also had a bridge rail out on Latagus Road that we fixed as well. Small Works, oh, sorry, Courtney Road, James Dean Construction, it appears it's secured granite construction for paving the road, and it looks like they will be able to pave the whole road with a pre-level from the bottom of the hill all the way to the top, which will be good for everybody. And then they, but they have also asked that we extend the closure, which was scheduled to open on the 15th of this month, to for another month till November 18th, and this will help them accomplish the rest of their, that upper section, and then get it all paved. So there's a big benefit to everybody to do this.
Also, cost savings, because if not, you're running probably three flaggers at $40 an hour.
Yeah, when they open it up to do the work. So it'll help them finish.
Cost savings keeping the road closed.
Does that save us money or save them money?
Saves us money.
Yeah.
Because we pay them directly, so they, it doesn't cost them anything. I mean, they would actually make money on the deal, not a lot, but whatever the difference is between what we pay them and what they pay the flaggers. But they would prefer not to have the rigs and the people in the way anyway, because it just provides, it's much safer when you don't have people driving through when you're trying to finish a big fill.
How much do we have left on that big fill?
We still got a couple of weeks. So that's why they want to run it through the 18th, and then that way they can pave and do the whole thing. With it closed, it'll be much easier trying to go around vehicles and stuff.
When is Granite hoping to get started?
Around the end of this month.
When it starts raining?
Yes, it'd be better that way. Actually, we're paving on gravel, so it really won't hurt anything as long as it doesn't freeze.
That's coming too.
Yeah, that's coming also. That's coming, but we're a little ways off.
So what's the plan with that part that was paved down at the bottom, the wavy part? Is that going to get tore up, or are they gonna?
I'm not sure what they're gonna do. They haven't, they haven't proposed anything. They'll either tear it up, or they'll do a pre-level over the top of it, and the problem, I mean, it still costs them money, because then they'll have to, we're not paying for that, because that's not part of our asphalt quantity.
Right.
And it'll also increase the other lane, and then you gotta, you know, taper that out to blend it in, and they'll pay for all that additional asphalt. But it may end up being cheaper than tearing it out and redoing it.
We'll wait and see what they want to do.
We'll wait and see, yeah.
Okay.
So if that's okay, we need to proceed with the notifications and meeting the RCW. So if you're both okay with that, we'll, we'll pursue that.
You give it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Annual striping program is complete for 2022. They finished, which is great. On the design side, Courthouse, actually, this is construction side. I just never moved it up. So our crews started. Our carpenters are continuing to form and pour the concrete for the ADA ramps and curbs that we're installing ahead of the paving operations. Annex One Lot will be complete this week, and so we'd like to, I'd like to talk to the directors to move their county vehicles from the bank lot and around these buildings to that lot. And so you're okay with that. I'll, I'll contact them and let them know, and I'll, I'll ask the electeds and see if they're willing to do that as well. I think it'll help out for parking around these buildings.
Good with that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, let's see. I'm still working on all, all the rest of the projects on this list, Rock Creek Bridge and Sundale. The federal safety projects, our designers are staking the improvements in the field. I think they'll be finished by next week with that, so those will go out for next year's construction in the spring, early spring. On the maintenance side, like I said, our crews are working on the parking lots. They are paving Annex One this week. It'll be done, and then they're prepping and getting all the things ready for the lots next to the Century Link and our jail building as well. So we're gonna lose some parking temporarily when we close the jail parking lot to do the grading and all the work there, and that'll, but opening up the other lot will help us gain some capacity. They're also, the East End Crew is also working on prepping East Road with culverts and on the shoulders, and this is for the paver next summer, so they're kind of doing some of that prep work in advance. On the West End, we actually pulled one of the West End crews to come up, and they'll, they're the ones paving the Annex One Lot, and then they'll move over and work on the jail lot. So we're trying to get all this done this month, since Granite will be open. We know they're gonna be batching to do the Courtney Road project, so that extends our time when the paving plans are open, which is working out good for us, because usually they'd be down toward the third week of this month, so. And they also finished those culverts on Trolane, so there were some concerns from some of the residents there about flooding, and so all those culverts that we talked about upsizing are done. The building. Let's see, HVAC units, we, they're working through the, the final designs for those upgrades. We also have an ambient kit for the big chiller that sits out back that we're gonna install. We had a change order months ago to do this work, but we were waiting for slack time, because basically we'll have no AC during the time they're gonna do that, and it's supposed to be a little cooler next week. So what that'll allow us to do is, if you remember last winter, you know, we have a good heat gain because of the windows in the building, and so we're actually trying to run the chiller, but the chiller only goes down, you can only run it when it's so cold outside, so this will allow us to get down a little, the outdoor temperature can be cooler, and the AC will still run to cool the inside, so that'll help us out for some of those tougher days in the winter as well. Let's see. Pioneer Center. HVAC unit replacements in the locations that we've been waiting for material will start next week. And we also have a flooring replacement in the activity room where the seniors are. Carpet in there needs to be replaced, and so we have a small works contract on add, so we'll see how that turns out. Same thing, the courthouse, small works contract for the carpet and tile in the remodel areas.
In the break room.
Yeah. Okay. Fairgrounds water line, we ordered materials for that, but like everything else, they're delayed, and so we'll see when they actually get here, if we actually have time to do anything.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they're here. No, we're dealing with DHAP now.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have got a grant for that project, and now we have to do a complete survey. I'm not sure why that would be, but we do. It used to be an easy form you could do in disturbed areas, but you can no longer do that. You literally have to consult with the tribes and do, if you're doing digging, using state dollars, which is what we're doing. So we, our archaeologist has to prepare a report, has to consult with the tribes, so now it becomes a spring project. He said he can get it to me at the end of the fall, which is December 20th. I'm like, okay, that's good, but that'd help me. I can't dig in December, so.
Okay.
And the radio site, we're finishing. There, the carpenters are out here working, so we kind of put that on hold for a little while. They'll run up there. They got one more week to finish putting the metal on the sides, and we're finishing up this, we reviewed the specs, gave our comments back, and then we'll write the RFP and send it out. Our RFP's almost ready. We're just waiting for their technical specs to put in it. We'll be ready to go. Wish Ram letter?
All yours.
Okay, you can receive the Wish Ram letter. I've actually talked to the people numerous times. I know quite a few of them, I don't know, over the years, but they're talking about $25,000 we have on for the capital, and I made sure that they were aware, and Sharon was the one, that it doesn't do a lot of the things she lists here. It's for the playground equipment. It's a safety issue that deals with our insurance provider. That's why it made the capital list. I wouldn't have put it on there for, you know, the capitalist. It's the fact that the way the swing set sits, our old insurance provider said you can't have that there, because the kids can swing out, and there's not a safe falling area for them if they fall off the swing set. So we have to look at reconfiguring that. I've talked to the new insurance providers, see if they feel the same way, but my guess is they probably do. I also, when we talked about the flags, I suggested, I said, I'll tell you what, here's the deal with the flags. It isn't about the light. It's about, we don't have anybody down there, and we can't send anybody down there every time they decide to go put the flags at half-staff, because we'll get hammered if we miss that, or they go from half-staff to full staff. I mean, we get the emails in the morning, so we can do it here and at the Pioneer Center. So I said, now, if you want a volunteer that would volunteer and say they'll do that, we could probably put some flags there. Well, you guys could pay somebody to just, no, that isn't what I said. I said volunteer. Yeah, volunteer that we pay, and I said, no, that's, we don't work that way. We can't pay somebody just when they go. It's too difficult. There's other labor laws. I said, you get somebody to volunteer, and we can look at it. Said, we might be able to look at it during Memorial Day, but it isn't the light that's the issue. It's the fact the flags go up and down all the time. That's why we nuked them out of there.
It used to be more rare, but now it's, it happens all the time.
Yeah. And I went down there and looked. There's some maintenance we need to do down there, and I'm gonna meet with the facility supervisor down there and try to get some people down there and do some cleanup around there, just we've been a little low on staff and just had one guy that ran down there and mowed it, did the major stuff, but there's some stuff we need to do.
There is, they did mention one thing that I thought was pretty eyesore when I was down there, I don't know, three weeks ago, and that's the first thing you see when you come in is the outhouse.
Yes, the outhouse.
Can it be like moved on the other side of the driveway?
Yes, it should go over there. I didn't realize, that's an easy one. We're gonna take care of that. I did not realize that the outhouse was over there, plus it sits at a slant. So no, we will move the outhouse. We're gonna call bishops and have them relocate the outhouse.
And the site.
And we're gonna fix the sign too, and look at painting some of that wrought iron, and some of the stuff we just, we need to do down there. I mean, I gotta get somebody up there. We gotta close the bird holes that they're trying to have hammered through next to our glue lamps and all that, so it's time to, it's time to spend a little bit of time down there, do some maintenance.
And since Dave isn't here, I, I'll just wait on the Lisle crosswalk issue, so.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, well, well, we got one more thing, sorry. We usually hire temporaries in the wintertime for snow plowing on the west side. Do we have one in Glenwood and one in Golden Dale, or one in Glenwood and White Salmon? And we'd like to look again. Now, it doesn't mean we'll be successful, but we'd like to start looking if we could, to see if we could get our two temporaries. We have them budgeted, so it's not an additional thing. And then we bring them in, we can't, we typically bring them in around November, and then they just work with the crews, because we've tried the other way where they're on call, and you don't keep them that way. Somebody else calls them out, and you can't get them. But if I hire them, it definitely saves us, because if not, we have to go to a contractor at considerable amount more money than what we pay our temporary.
If you can find them.
Yes. If we can have permission to hire those, or at least go out and search for those people.
You wrote about it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great day. Next up, we have our public health director, Erin Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as you know, our health officer was appointed to a regional health office position. The state told us they would cover, once she transitioned into her position, they let us know that they would cover our county as far as health officer. They moved her to the, in one of the northeast corners.
She's in charge of the regional areas.
Yeah, so they, they set up so that there was a regional health officer for, I think we're in the southwest region, so there's a shared health officer. So for an example, if your health officer went on vacation, or they resigned, that you'd have this extra layer of coverage.
Was that an application process with the state, or did the state reach out and hire?
It was.
And pick seven people, or just the people that apply?
It was an application process. They went through.
I was curious about that either, and then this, this perfectly into that, so it answered my question.
Yep, yep. So anyway, so she's transitioned. She was assured that we would have coverage from the state. I've been going back and forth with them. As of Friday, they required a letter from the Board of Health saying that I needed assistance before they would even consider helping us, so I'm asking for you to sign a letter today. The state's that we need assistance so that we can have that coverage until we can recruit our own health officer. Another piece of that is, we did reach out to a couple of individuals. They felt our rate was not appropriate, our rate of reimbursement, so I've reached.
The services is below?
Correct. The one for Pacific County was almost twice what we pay. I've asked from a couple of other counties to kind of see what their rate is, so we can look at that and see if that's something we need to adjust. We are a very low maintenance county/department, so I'm hard.
How many phone calls did you have with, in the last two months with the, you know, kind of thing?
So.
How many else is different during the peak of the crisis of COVID? How many conversations a month did you have with our public health officer?
At least once a week, if not more, me personally, and that does not include my staff. So, and in September, because she transitioned, I promised not to call her, so I can't give you September statistics, because that's not a good reflection.
Back up during the crisis?
Yes.
And I would imagine on most years, if we're not dealing with a crisis, how often would you normally call, once a month, twice a month?
Maybe. It, it just depends. If you have rabies exposure with seven young children, you know, then that's, we might spend three or four hours worth of time on phone calls back and forth, like how to best do that if it's a month, like Sep, well, that was September, actually. But there are months where there isn't, and so our contract is actually written, so there, there's a minimum reimbursement, understanding that there's months where we don't utilize a lot of their time, but that there was months that we would actually, they would, you know, kind of earn all of that back.
And that's kind of where I'm getting to, is we're thinking about it with the attorneys in actual price per hour averaging, and I will be looking at this one the same way.
So in order to get the Board of Health's authorization and signature, would we need, we would need to call a Board of Health meeting, or is this something that the Chair of the Board of Health can just do?
I think you could probably call them and ask them to sign that we, I don't know what year.
I reached out to Paul and Sunday. Sunday's willing to sign it. I think Paul may be out of town. We've signed letters like this before. This isn't my preference, but.
Do you have a space for each signature person on there? He's that Board of Health person, okay. So I would say, yeah, as long as you can reach a consensus of signatures, the letter is valid.
I can.
If you can't, then it isn't.
Yes.
You think you can.
That's true. It's very fair. I hope I can. We, because we did, so we were trying to work with the state to get this set up by October 1st, because it's the, the second date. We gave Dr. Person as an end date. She very graciously agreed to stay on. The implications of her not doing that, we would have canceled all of our clinics, because without that health officer in line, we, we can't do, we can't do vaccines, we can't do family planning, so without that oversight, we can't do our business. Any other questions?
I'm just being a little bit of a drama queen today. I probably should have read it to make sure it was what you said it was. Not that I don't trust you, but I turned up the sign just randomly.
Thank you. So she'll stay on at least until they appoint someone?
Yes, she will.
And we, we should have our own little regional health person to fall back on now, if for some reason she's busy or something there too.
We should, because you all signed this for me, because apparently we can't access them until.
We have our own?
No, until.
No, until you've asked for help.
What happens regularly if she's on vacation and we have our normal vaccine clinics and all that?
That's fine, because she's still assigning authority.
Okay.
Right, so, but if, if her contract's done, we don't have anyone in that.
In the position.
In the position, so.
Got it.
She has actually not gone on vacation that I'm aware of since COVID, so anyway. And then just a quick update for the Crisis Services. Everything is on, I think the consent agenda today, I'll be gone for 10 days, but everything is lined out for that 10 days, so barring any unforeseen, everything is taken care of and in process and should be good to go, so.
Famous last words.
I know. That's why I said barring any unforeseen circumstances. I have wrapped it up quite nicely, so unless there's any other questions, I do have a timeline. They will be doing interviews the last week of October for any approvals, and I think that positions will be advertised starting tomorrow, so. One of them.
Questions?
Questions? Out? Okay. That's all I have then. Thank you.
Don't mind the drama queen. Thank you, Director Quinn, and thank you for all your work on the mental health project.
Well.
Well. You have executive today or not?
No.
Okay. Next up, HR.
Etol, HR Etol.
Etol.
Etol. Good morning, Commissioners. I don't think our report's gonna be near as interesting as slanting outhouses that the Public Works had in their update, but we'll try and keep you amused. Randy is not here today, and Casey's not here today, and last we talked, she wasn't gonna say anything, but that could.
I'm just here for moral support.
So, but I want to start off with IT. We've, Jordan Woolery started on September 26th. The IT department is back to being fully staffed, and we're happy about that. First time in, I don't know, seven, eight months. And I want to thank the Commissioners again for allowing us to change the org chart in that department, so we can basically grow our own, and other departments are doing that as well, and I think that's gonna be a, a key tool in our ability to staff and retain some of these positions that we've, we've all struggled with in the past, so thank you again for that. I know Randy's, the IT manager's goal is, I'd say vision, but it's, it's more action than that, is to, within the year, have the entire IT staff completely cross-trained and all able to do different aspects. They've been to some degree siloed in the past, which, and I think you can do that with primary and secondary responsibilities, but we know we're not gonna get additional staff in the future. We know that the demands of IT only grow, and so having a completely cross-trained department gives us more, as well as outsourcing some of the things that were, we've talked to you in the past about looking at, anyway. Human resources, oh, fleet management software. So yesterday, I was informed the Sheriff's Department is not going to pursue using the fleet management software. I talked to Sharon. She has asked for more formal estimates on the cost of, of the, to use the software in her fleet, and so we're getting that information for her, so not to put words in her mouth. I think she's interested. She just wants to know what the bottom line's gonna be, and so we'll provide that for her.
Any idea why the sheriff was excited for it and now isn't?
I think they just, I can't speak for the Sheriff's Department. I think tight budgets, they didn't, they wanted to allocate that $6,500 to other, other things, and so, so I think it was a budgetary issue, though I know they're gonna be here today, so they may be able to address that further.
They are.
And then in solid waste.
Well, good call.
We'll utilize the software and the solid waste rigs, and at that point, I think that's the only two departments that are planning on using this going forward. So I'm not sure where else to go with the fleet management. I will say that Shelby and Jeff and I put a lot of time in upfront to review and, and get it to where the one we're test-driving, I, I do think it's a lost opportunity. I mean, I started out with no understanding or knowledge of fleet management software, and have kind of come to believe that it could be a valuable tool in managing our assets.
I just want to make it, I guess I could say clear, or concise, or to the point, or it is my understanding that as the Commissioners hold the purse strings, they control the budget, and they then could add, if they so choose, the money for this fleet management software in every department they wanted. I believe the vehicle, regardless of which department or office it's in, is actually owned by this county. It is the property of this board, so if this board chose to put fleet management software in it, it legally could. Now, we can verify that legal opinion with our prosecutor if we so chose, but that's my opinion on that issue.
And then, before I move on, just mentioned, there has been some discussion about possibly taking one of the solid waste vehicles or any surplus vehicle and establishing at least one fleet vehicle to get started. If that's something you want to do, then we're gonna need to determine in the budget process, because we have to repost it anyway, I believe, and put some funds in the Commissioner's budget, or wherever you want to put them for the cost of this fleet vehicle, so I just don't want to lose track of that, that if that's something we want to do. 2023, we need to do.
I figured that would be a topic for discussion on Thursday's workshop.
I just didn't want to lose track of it.
Think of three, and, and yes, I would like those, out of those departments and out of those budgets at the start of the year to make it nice and clean.
Okay, I just didn't want to lose track of them. And I think Brenda's here. Brenda, you want to come up and, Brenda has a request for the Commissioners, and I told her it'd make perfect sense to her.
So I submitted a request for, to fill the payroll position, so I've made some changes in my office, so, anyway.
Because the payroll clerks moved into.
Moved over to the accountant position.
And, and if I may, I'm not putting words in your mouth.
Yep, no, go for it.
I think that's another example of growing our own.
Yep.
Maybe into the, eventually into that chief accountant position with some additional training and experience, so I think that's.
She's, I put her in a senior accountant too, and hopefully she'll go on with her education, and if that's what she wants, and she may end up being a CPA, who knows?
Because she has a degree in finance.
Oh, absolutely, yes. She's very qualified.
So again, I think another good example of hard-to-fill position, growing our own and, and a very known quantity, which is good.
That mean all of our accounting positions? Does that mean all of our accounting positions in the county are now filled?
No, payroll's open.
Oh, other than.
And not the senior, the CPA slash, that one still isn't, as of today, but this may be a plan to move that.
Move that, in that direction.
So your request is permission to fill the payroll?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Did you want to?
A couple new things. Well, one, just to highlight on the consent agenda today. Item number five is a resolution renaming Department 27, um, from chemical dependency to behavioral health and creating Fund 145 for behavioral health. Once that is approved, we will work on getting an emergency supplemental put together in the next couple of weeks and post it for public hearing, um, and go forward with that. And then last week, I received notice that we have additional, um, revenue coming in. This is stemming off of the American Rescue Plan. This is the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. So, um, the American Rescue Plan appropriated $2 billion to Treasury across 22 and 23 to provide payments to eligible revenue-sharing counties and tribes. So we are a revenue-sharing county. And so our allocation, um, is looking like two different payments of $172,981. The deadline for submission of this is January 31st of '23. We should be receiving our first payment four to five business days after I submit. Once I get approval from you, submit, there's a award letter that needs to be signed by the chairman. And then the second payment will be, you know, sometime after the first of the year, depending on when you file for a submission.
Possibly good news going into Thursday's budget discussion.
At, at minimum, $350,000 additional revenue. For those counties who do not submit to receive this, um, their funds will be reallocated and distributed to the counties who didn't submit for, um, for the award. So that will show up, and any additional revenues would show up in our second payment.
It's also worth noting, since you referenced the emergency supplemental, is that is not county funds. Those are funds that are coming from a different source, so they're, they will not impact the budget for 2023 that you're currently working on. Things just good to mention that as often as possible is.
Nobody's listening.
Nobody's listening.
So would, will you be able to get the emergency supplemental done by the time we need to hire and start?
That is the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, the timing has to be perfect and get really going by Friday for me, on my end of things, to get notice to the paper and then get the hearing going. And it would be the, you know, the goal date to have it all, the budget all in by November 6th.
There's also another item on the consent agenda, and that is approving the DCR job description and, and its out replacement. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that. I will submit by Thursday the remaining five positions, and they'll be before you next Tuesday. We will, pending approval in the consent agenda for the DCR position, it'll be posted tomorrow. And then these other positions, should they be approved, in next week's consent agenda will be posted the following week. So, um, near as I can tell, all the pieces are moving together and aligning for November 6th. So, though, Director Quinn and I often talk about, and I think you've mentioned it, what is it we're missing? But I don't think much of anything. I think everybody's pulling together really good to check and cross-check each other's work and make sure we're not missing anything, so. And then, uh, finally for HR, the CPI is, for all this, Seattle was 9%. Our union contracts, um, max out at 4%. So, uh, since we know that, we're going to go ahead and start updating all those wage schedules for January 1st. But, uh, I just wanted to mention that to you, that, uh, it had been 10% dropped to 9%, but with gas back up to six bucks a gallon, and depending what OPEC does Thursday, you could go back up to 10%, not talk about it, yeah. So, anyway, so that's just a, just a heads up. And then in solid waste, um, I should get the, uh, draft of the consultant's review this week. I was supposed to get it last week, so, um, I've encouraged her to get that to me this week. We did meet with Ecology to discuss adjusting the grants. I had originally intended to put one of the grants on today's consent agenda, and I didn't. Want to wait to get the report. I don't want to prematurely tell the state we're going to turn something back and then have her report, say we shouldn't turn it back, so. But we do, and the next week have to notify Ecology of, I mean, clearly we didn't have staff to work on these grants for at least three or four months, so we know we're going to have to make some reductions in, so they can redistribute the funds to other counties. So it's just how much. Dave, Kevin, I, and I have a meeting with, uh, a team from Ecology next week to discuss the horse thief. So that's been scheduled, the closure of horse thief, so more to report after that phone call. And the compost procurement ordinance that I brought to you a couple Tuesdays ago, it's been determined by the state that we, that we do not qualify for that, so we. And that the PA had, um, determined that as well, that he didn't think, um, we met the obligations to, um, be required to put a compost procurement ordinance in place.
So we were told by someone at the state we needed to do it, and then now this.
We were told by Ecology, correct?
Yeah. I got a letter saying you're, you're subject to this, and I sent it to the PA, and he was reviewing it. And then I got another letter from Ecology saying, "Upon further review, you don't qualify," so.
Same, same.
Same person.
Person.
I think we were advised, um, six months ago. If I go back and check my memory, there was somebody that sat there six months ago and was telling us the initial phases of that, so.
Yeah. So again, I wasn't speaking for the PA, but I think he'd come to the same conclusion, or was going to come to the same conclusion, so. So that's off the table for now, so. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer for any of the aforementioned topics or subjects.
No questions here?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Jen.
And thank you to both of you, as well as your staff, Brenda, for everything that everybody has done to all row in the same direction with this mental health program. It goes to show that we can really do anything when we're all working together, so thank you all. You have anything else for the?
Sure, I can give you a, a little debate. So I had my, uh, Washington Rural County's insurance pool conference.
Oh, how'd that go?
Was interesting.
Are they going to miss us?
I don't know if they're going to miss us, but they're now finally listening to me. As you know, I've been in that group for two years. I've brought up things that concern me. With the pool, to the pool. I get the, "Yeah, yeah, whatever. You're the new guy. Go sit in the corner." Which is one of the reasons we're no longer there. Well, I think they're realizing real fast that they probably should have listened to me two years ago, because the way they do things is all outdated and archaic, and maybe potentially needs to change. Some of those things are, are adjuster, our claims guy, Jonathan. It's set up in that insurance contract that 6% of our county bill, about $1.4 million, uh, is what he gets paid. 6%. That's $85,000 for you and me and anybody listening.
Whoa.
So you have to ask, does he do $85,000 for the work? Maybe. But then you have to look at other counties like Ferry County, and they're paying their guy $45,000, because it's mandated in the contract 6%. So does that insurance agent do 6% or should they cash us a big check? Especially in poor counties that don't have the money, when the other insurance company manages to do everything without the agent. So they haven't really been interested in looking at that until now, and kind of once the rest of the members of this group found out this weekend, or this last week that I was leaving, or we were leaving this county.
They didn't know?
Some of them did not.
Okay.
And even at the meeting, they were told that it's still potential. It's not final. That's what they were told from the insurance carry, the insurance pool. And I'm like, no, 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 it's.
We're sending you a check for gap insurance.
We signed, yeah. They're just hoping we'll change our mind. And it's so interesting, to say the least, but that's one of them. The other one that I've had a problem with, with that insurance company, is they only have one way to insure something, and that's full replacement value. So, and that's fine if you want to replace your, or insure your courthouse or the new building for replacement value. That makes total sense. But why should you have to spend $65,000 on a train paying replacement value when there's no way you're ever going to replace the train? So you would think you'd be able to just.
$6,000.
Whatever it is. But you'd think you'd be able to just set a dollar amount, um, to pay for the cleanup, if that's what you wanted to do. But everything they do is, is full replacement value. And bringing that up again, there was three other commissioners that felt the same way, because they all had pieces of property that they wished they weren't paying full coverage on. Uh, the automotive coverage was another one that they're going to look into. So essentially, um, they're finding their premiums are going up really, really, really fast.
What, what is the rate this year?
They, uh, didn't mention, once again.
Really? Don't they usually each year?
Before now, yes. I'm sure that will be mentioned when they, because normally they do the budget part before now. Uh, the budget part, um, was pushed off to this week. They're having a special meeting this week, even though we all met last week. But this week, there's also one less person that will be there. Whether there's any correlations of that, I don't know, because I saw it and got an answer. I think they reached out to each county individually and, and asked them, or told them what their increase rates were. Because, yeah, normally I would know what the increase in rate is. I would know what the fund balance, um, was, but there's no, but no talks of the board, um, on that issue all year.
You don't know what your fund balance is all year?
Nope.
Is there a subcommittee, a finance budgeting subcommittee or something?
There's, uh, there's an executive board, um, essentially the president, vice president, treasurer that, that does look at bills and claims on a weekly slash monthly basis. But other than, um, doing the budget in the fall, that's when you know when your fund balance is, or, or whatnot, without any other issues. So anyway, moral of the story, uh, they would love to have us back. They're, um, adjusting some of their stuff, including tools for internet and, and, um, so that you can better monitor and, and assess your risks and whatnot. So they're stepping into the stone age, which is good, or stepping out of the stone age. As far as the conference goes, um, hotel was nice. If you liked open bars, uh, it was nice. I'm not a drinker, so, um, yeah, it was. It was a party, to say the least, and.
Was it?
So I didn't, uh, I didn't partake for the most part. Other than that, I won't get into the fun parts of it.
Okay.
At least not with my mic on. Other than that, actually, I got one more for you.
Okay.
Blameful numbers.
Yeah.
So we know the offers have been stuck at 9.2, 9.3, 9.2, 9.3, that's what they keep offering. We shot back your counter offer last time, which I believe was 9.5.
9.6.
I told them that they may have two votes at that number, um, but I am at a higher number, and I don't know if the board is willing to, uh, do a contract, uh, ununanimously. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't.
How did, uh, how did they handle that?
And I told them what my number was, and, um, they really didn't like that. He came back and re-offered it, uh, 9.55.
So what are the, what's that number? What were, what'd that number work out to be?
As far as, oh, it was, um, I don't have it in there. I want to say 2.1 million tons at 4.30, which 4.30 is the blended rate between Snohomish and the regular tipping fees, and adding, somehow they calculate that as a blended rate. And then I think it's, uh, was 2.15 a ton for over 21, 2.1 million. I think that's what the offer, I'd have to go look, but, um, I believe that's what it was. It came up at 5.5, and I told them that I would present that to the board for your two's opinion. He thought it was you that was the one standout, uh, and I told him, "No, no, no, it's me." And it, and it kind of surprised him. So anyway, I told them I would present that to the board and, um, uh, whatnot. We also discussed before that the, the roll-offs that I want for code compliance and whatnot. And unbeknownst to me, uh, he had had conversations with litter crew before that about potentially putting a roll-off up in areas like, let's call it Glenwood, that's far away from a transfer station. So if they want to capitalize on working Glenwood for a couple of weeks, they have a, someplace to put the trash right there without a whole bunch of long drives. And to see if Republic was interested in dropping a container to some of these far-off areas sometimes, they've got a lot of, um, what do you want to call them, when everybody throws all their junk out? Illegal, illegal dumps, uh, up in Trout Lake, past the Ranger District up there. So for things like that, they were questioning whether Republic could drop a box out there, and Republic's more than willing. Anyway, with the code compliance thing, which, you know, I've been, uh, bugged about, Republic has agreed, uh, to provide 12 roll-off boxes a year. They can either be used by litter cleanup or code enforcement, uh, to be used accordingly and, and.
Are these 20s or 40s?
Um, I believe they were 20s. They don't have 40s. The 40s are all at solar farms. They're 20s, and to be used at the discretion of the county. So, um, that should help as code compliance has a problem. They can call in a roll-off and drop a roll-off off, and hopefully it's in these properties cleaned up. I shot for a higher number than that, but they're having issues with truck drivers. So any more than that would be a promise they probably can't fulfill, because they couldn't fit that many more into their schedule without hiring five or seven more truck drivers. I did question, if you remember, the economic development part of the contract, puts in things for like spring cleanups and stuff like that, and helping the dumpsters and white salmon and binge and whatnot. And so part of the contract negotiation is deleting the economic development section.
Right.
So I wanted to clarify that there was going to be any problems, uh, and they're like, "Oh, no, 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 no."
That'll come out of the 12 boxes, I'm sure.
That's totally separate. They do that, um, not through the contract, but through their, um, charitable giving side of their organization. So, and that, that reminded me that that's exactly the case. So what normally happens with these cleanups is the group essentially applies through Republic, different side of Republic than we're used to dealing with, to get that. And the box people are actually a different subsidiary of Republic than we're used to dealing with as well. So that made me feel better about that one, anyway. But, um, so that's where we were, and then this morning, um, I just got, uh, a message, because he also was, um, when I told him I didn't like his 9.55 number, but I presented to the board, he said, "Don't present it to board, pull it." I'll get back to you with a new number.
Okay.
And he just sent that. And that number is 9.691, so it's 9,000 short of 9.7. And that number is, it's an interesting, um, this is 2.175 tons at 4.30.
Yeah, but then it goes $3.
Correct. But you have to understand, both these numbers are going to get CPI'd next year, anyway.
Right. Right, but it should have been two sixteen, right?
Um.
Because what was it supposed to be? The, it was supposed to be four thirty-six or something?
Four forty-six is the actual tipping fee number. There was no math that came to the two sixteen or two seventeen. That was essentially, I believe you applying, um, CPI on the original two number we talked about.
Right.
So he's, it's not that he, that really matters because I had him at a different negotiation at two twenty-five. Um, so I, I don't think he cares between two or two twenty-five. And, and we can probably adjust, we can put that at two twenty-five and lower the tonnage. Um, to hit the same six point seven number, if that's what you're more comfortable with. Um, I just told him I don't care how he gets to the six point seven number, just get to the six point seven number.
So that's what you wanted?
No, I told him just, he has to get to six point seven to have me remotely close to onboard.
Okay.
So, but if.
There's still more room for negotiation?
Um, I mean, yes and no. I mean, you have to think we don't necessarily have to negotiate. Uh, we can say too bad, so sad. Um, but, I mean, there's part of me that thinks you're a, a forty-six billion dollar corporation and, um, if you want to grow in Washington, you're going to grow in Washington regardless of what I do here or don't do here. Uh, now there's two factions of Republic and one of those is take volume, which obviously volume helps us. And one of them is reduce your volume, reduce your expenses, reduce your employees, reduce all that and only take fancy stuff like special ways contaminated their, all this stuff out of Seattle that they're getting a hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty a ton for. Um, because that's where they can capitalize and make the most profit. But the other one is the bigger push is for total tons and that takes an investment in, uh, rail yards and switching yards and I really think since I kind of gave them the idea of the, um, looking at the, the other section of the state over there that is controlled by somebody else. Um, I think that's what gave them some motivation to think that there's potential for growth here. Um, and with switching some of the Mason and Jefferson and whatnot on the trucks to potentially move over down there. Really it only frees up hundred thousand, but what it does is it allows them to put trains together faster and move trains faster. And right now, if a train takes twelve days to come and go, uh, if they can hook them up and make it more convenient to be NSF, which their negotiations let them to, um, that we can do trains every three days instead of every twelve days, we can potentially increase the volume. Not only here, but over there, they're also thinking they might, um, if they work on that landfill, they might be able to get the contract, the county contract. Um, so anyway, there could be, um, potential for two hundred, um, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand tons in that landfill. Um, which yeah, if it's two bucks, it's only five hundred grand. Uh, it's about a five hundred we don't have. Um, the, the kicker is SUE Mass and it's whether they want to invest, um, seven million, six million, seven million dollars into SUE Mass to try to bring down that Canadian waste. Um, and that's my argument. So if we, if we do this and, and, and lower our fee by, this would be the equivalent of four hundred grand of the CPI of the new, reducing it from nine hundred to five hundred. Um, why would that encourage you to do SUE Mass? Why does my five hundred grand matter to your seven hundred or seven million? Uh, and I guess their argument is they want us to have skin in the game. Prove we're a partner, blah, blah, blah. I still look at it that I believe a lot of me believes that they would, we're going to get the same result, no matter what we do. Um, we're going to get the same tonnage, we're going to get the same everything regardless of anything we do out of this. Um, I, I, I really think that because there is no guarantee that even if we do this, that they're going to do SUE Mass, other than I really think we're going to. Um, so, but same deal, if we choose not to do anything, are they just going to say, no, now you're being a jerk. We're not doing SUE Mass. We're not going to grow in Washington. We're not going to make more money. Uh, we don't care about corporate profits. We're just going to go after them. Um, I just don't see it. So I don't know. I'm talking way too much.
So any of that special waste, that hundred dollars of, you know, ton stuff, they still take some of that here?
Yeah, but there, it's a very small number. Uh, for the most part, Republic has so many county, uh, bid stuff that they don't have time, space or trains for most of that special waste. Um, it's a whole nother issue. Um, so they just don't go after. Um.
Yet.
Yes. Does it potentially do they?
Part of the, part of them that are, that are pushing for that, is that something that should be in that contract? That if they're going to bring special waste, it's a hundred dollars a ton, then we get a kicker on that?
That's something that we have it in our contract now, and that'd be a good question to have for Steve. Uh, when he's here, because we do have it in the contract now that our special waste, whatever it is, I left my book in there. I read it off to you last week. It's like eighty bucks for asbestos and sixty bucks for this. Um, I don't know exactly how that works or exactly.
But is that supposed to stay in the contract?
What our number is, no, that's supposed to be removed.
So is it, I'm going to give you something over here, but this is what my hand's really doing?
Absolutely.
And is that something that, I mean, if there's still.
Said, you have to.
There's still five hundred thousand sitting there on the table or four hundred thousand sitting on the table. What else can we get out of that? Other than twelve boxes?
Oh no, there was a counter. Since, since they're doing that, they're asking that, uh, PI, uh, be placed on the transfer station starting in January twenty-four. That matches the PI language that's included in the host fee agreement. So they want to use the CPI schedule that's in the host fee agreement to put a CPI on residents uh, taking trash to the transfer station. Um, so you think about that and, and, you know, this year was a whatever, call it nine percent CPI, uh, if transfer, if it's.
But we don't pay for transfer stations.
The public pays seven bucks when they dump their trash. Um, the CPI, right, the CPI would.
But that's, but that's only supposed to cover the trucking costs.
The CPI would, if, if we agree, the CPI would go onto that and now this year, the, the, the public would have paid whatever, six dollars and seventy cents, and that would be a year of CPI. Um, now it, that seven dollars apparently hasn't been raised for under twelve years. Um, it is a negotiated agreement here between us and them separately.
Of what, of what the, the trucking cost is?
Outside of the contract. So it is still my opinion, um, that that's just a, that's something that they've always wanted. Um, and I don't think that we have to give that in order my too interested myself in giving that. So I personally don't even plan on responding to that.
We're already given four hundred thousand.
Right. That four hundred buys us, um, goodwill. It buys us more contractor boxes for bigger, deeper community cleanups. It gets us contract boxes so that we can hopefully do something with some of our code compliance that we've never been able to do before. Um, so there is a plus. It's very expensive for four hundred grand.
I mean, you could take that same four hundred grand if you got the money and, but you mean, think about how many cleanups we could do with four hundred grand.
Can't do one private property, that's the public funds. We as a county can't buy a box and put it on somebody's property and tell them to clean it up.
Right.
So this is a way around that. So it's just a matter of, yeah, is it worth four hundred grand now? Uh, but, so I said, you're going to have to give me a nine point seven for me to even consider my original ask was, I think, nine point eight five.
I think we need to probably, I mean, if, if they're still getting four hundred thousand, we need to talk about, um, special waste and two.
I don't disagree. Um, I think, and, and before we say yes to everything, we as a board should go through that contract, um, section by section, just to make sure we're not missing something or overseeing something and, and, and. Yeah.
Keep working on it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Um, no, I guess I would say it just comes down to, and, and we can question this. The difference between the four thirty and the four forty-six isn't much, but what it does, if you keep the same bottom line, is reduce that tonnage. So right now you're at two point one seven five. If you go to four forty-seven, you're only down at two or two point five, which gives you a higher rate on a base rate. So if there was a down cycle, if there was, all of a sudden we're not getting, you know, nine or, uh, two point two, two point three million tons, which we have every year for five years, so I can't imagine it wouldn't. Um, you would get a higher rate by getting a higher, lower tonnage. So I don't know if that's worth pushing to change this four thirty back to a four forty-six and lower that tonnage number. Um, that's the way I would rather see it and, and I think that might be a counter, um, after Thursday.
Okay, well, do what you think is right. And, uh, interesting, now they don't know who is the bad cop.
Yeah, they were, they were confused there.
Good.
They, they definitely thought you were the bad cop until they, they realized it was me.
All right. Um, anything else?
Uh, nothing to think of.
Hearing done, I would entertain a motion to recess for lunch.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we recessed for lunch, be back at one o'clock.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor on recessing for lunch, uh, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all for signing on and we will see you all at one o'clock. Good afternoon. We are going to call the regular work session in the Clickatet County Board of County Commissioners to order. Um, let the record show two commissioners are present. Commissioner Soder is absent. Uh, we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda as presented with one add-on under new business, an agreement for provision of services, um, by and between Beacon Health and Clickatet County Public Health Department for the purpose of providing three hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars in funding to support the Clickatet County in development of local crisis responder programs. Uh, for clarification, this is, um, state money coming into the county, not county money being spent.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the commissioner meeting minutes for September twentieth, twenty twenty-two as presented.
I will step down and second that motion as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And next we will move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. Um, commissioners will respond after all the citizens have had a chance to give their comments. Uh, we will begin as always in the room. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment? Not today? Okay, we will go online. Is there anybody online who would like to provide public comment? If so, star six to unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on. I am not seeing anyone. Well, we have things that we could be doing. If you have, would like to provide public comment, please just get our attention. Sherry.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I, yes, thank you. It's a beautiful day in Clickatet County. I'm sure the mountains look great and the view is beautiful out there around Goldendale. Hope it stays that way. That's, I would like to talk about industrial solar in Clickatet County and the need for our county to have solar ordinances. As you've seen, as you've been provided information, other counties in the state of Washington have road ordinances, solar ordinances to protect their counties and put moratoriums in place to write solar ordinances. I feel it is, since you've been given so much information on industrial solar, and let me clarify it before you spread misinformation. I'm not asking you to ban industrial solar from Clickatet County. I'm not saying that and I've never have. What I'm asking is for regulations on siting to protect the environment, to protect people, to protect farmland and to protect the city of Goldendale and all the people that live there and enjoy it. So we've provided you information regarding lithium batteries and the dangers of them, excuse me, not your cell phone batteries. And I, I'm very offended by the mockery of saying that you are sitting around lithium batteries and you're not afraid. We're talking about large scale industrial lithium batteries, the size of warehouses. And for you to say that these lithium batteries aren't coming to Clickatet County, so there's no reason to address them and you mock the dangers of them. Let me remind you of Morris, Illinois and the three-day fire, four thousand people evacuated from the town. The EPA is still working on the toxic cleanup. These are facts. Lithium battery fires happen, but you refuse to look at that and you mock the dangers of them. Clickatet County has had preliminary proposal from Carriage or Cypress Creek. It includes large industrial lithium battery storage. Lund Hill originally had forty, well, I'm not going to say, it had large industrial lithium battery and mysteriously disappeared. But obviously that will come back when all the solar projects are done out there. So I'm asking you gentlemen to do your job to protect the citizens, to protect the county, write solar ordinances, put a moratorium back in place. The industrial foreign entities are here to take advantage of our lack of ordinances. And you've admitted with our lack of ordinances, which are laws, FSEC can do what they want. I'd like you to address why you won't give the county solar ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Star six to unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on, either in the room or online. Jump up and down, get our attention. Pat Arnold.
Oops, can't see me. All right, there we go. Um, two things I think you're aware about of the event this tenth anniversary of the actual opening of the river, of the White Salmon River on Friday, um, at Northwestern Park and a um, habitat walk and some other things, starting at nine, and then a program starting at ten thirty and salmon, if you register, uh, salmon bake, if you register. Um, and I'm sure you've got an invitation, but I just want to bring your attention to it because it's going to be a really fine day. We did this ten years ago uh, as a group effort. This one is sponsored by the Yakima and it should be really really a fine day. Um, the other thing is that um, some of us in the Trout Lake Community Council met last week, I guess, on the phone um, with a McKed staffer who handles the broadband stuff. And it's apparent, uh, I think we all knew that the way the FCC surveys have been done, they've shown that a place like Trout Lake is well served because there are some people in rural center who are well served, and so they mark the whole census block or all the census blocks as well served. I think we've all known that. We know it doesn't work. We know it's not a realistic reflection of the situation in the rural parts of the county. Apparently those regulations are beginning, those definitions may be changing. There was some talk about that at the meeting a few weeks ago. Um, but it is really critically important for people in the county to do that survey that McKed has on their website so that we can get accurate numbers about speeds. Uh, it's really getting to be a crisis for many people who live out outside of rural centers that just cannot access adequate service. So I would like to ask if there's something that you as a Board of Commissioners can do to encourage. I know you've done it in the past, but it's, I think it's time to ramp up again and try to get uh, really a lot of responses to that survey. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? In the room? Online? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Sorry, Pat. Star six to raise your, star six to unmute yourself, raise your hand, turn your video on. Okay, if, oh, zero zero eight eight.
Yeah, Delmer Eldred, Goldendale. I would like to know what you guys have done to improve the economy in Clicktack County the last two years. I mean, what what is it? What is, how how much money have you guys generated through programs that you have approved of? And uh, you know, it to offset some of the spending that is going on. I just wondered, it seems like you're spending a whole lot more than you're taking in and you haven't done anything to improve the economy. So I just wondered if you could give me one example or two of things that you have done that has made an economic benefit to this county. I'll wait and hear you answer.
As always, Mr. Eldred, you know, we will respond back when you've used your time and.
When, when nobody can ask you a question again. Okay, thank you.
I'm guessing that was the end of your public comment then. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment?
Seven two one one. Greg Wagner with CEE. It's been brought to your attention multiple times and again last week as to the dangers of lithium ion batteries. These dangers are undisputable, even though you refuse to listen. You continue to ignore the truth and place the citizens in danger. Your job responsibility is the safety, health and welfare of the citizens. Again, something you failed at. There are batteries planned in the Cypress Creek Carriage or project. Two acres of lithium ion batteries that total sixty three million watts of stored energy. If and when that explodes, it's going to kill a number of people. You're going to have firefighters respond to the fire. And when the battery bank blows, you can possibly kill some of our local firefighters. Will you gentlemen be the ones to go to loved ones home and tell them how their loved one firefighter was killed? I doubt it. The batteries are in Clicktack County's future and they will endanger the safety and health and welfare of all the citizens. When will you do your jobs as public servants and protect the citizens of the county? To neglect the battery issue and laugh it off as a joke, as all three of you have done, is negligence of your job and dereliction of your duties. You are paid to represent the citizens of the county, not the solar corporations. I'd like for you to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? In the room or online? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Last chance. I am not seeing anyone. Mr. Christopher, would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Okay. Uh, first I'll say with Pat, the tenth anniversary of Conde Nast, I did get the email yesterday, the invite. Um, I do have uh, some job interviews to sit through that day. So I'm not exactly sure timing wise whether I'm going to be able to make it, but if I can, I'll be there. Uh, and I agree with you on more input on the broadband study. I don't know that it's necessarily going to matter, but I think it would definitely give us a better evaluation of the actual overall, because my area is the same way. They said, oh, you know, you're 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 served just fine. And in all reality, if you want to pay a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty bucks for Starlink, you are served just fine, but that is an awful high price. Um, to Sherry, uh, asking about lithium ion batteries, uh, and education on lithium ion batteries. Um, I for one believe education is uh, buyer beware. Um, I think depending on what websites you read, you can get a biased opinion uh, of any topic. Um, on one way or the other. Uh, personally, um, I will be attending a training from a um, university of higher education uh, on lithium batteries and understanding the technology hazards and safety risks of. So I get my uh, information um, from uh, higher education, not from what websites seem to want to post. Dell, what have we done for the economy and your quote that quote that we haven't done anything to improve the economy? Sir, that is a wrong quote. I was instrumental in in receiving or at least uh, pushing Republic Services to build a truck yard in the Goldendale Industrial Complex, uh, which is the uh, or the industrial park, which is the first new construction in that park in ten years. Um, so I would say that's kind of a big deal. Um, now you can argue how many people will employ and all that, all you want, but it's still the first new construction in ten years in that industrial park. Uh, what has this board done? Well, this board hired a small business development specialist, which I don't exactly know the number off the top of my head because we haven't been updated in about uh, two months. But if I remember correctly, uh, in six months, she has brought for something like two point seven million dollars uh, worth of uh, money into this economy by working with multiple, multiple uh, small businesses to grow their business and secure their businesses, including funding for them and what have you. So there is a ton there, not counting what our economic development department does every single day. Uh, like just three days ago, uh, getting uh, the final sign off from the Fed to put in an aviation maintenance training facility at the Dallasport Airport, which if I remember correctly, will uh, employ about fifty four people and also give our um, our juveniles coming out of high school, a potential career, a high paying career, I might add, if they don't want to go sit in an office and be a lawyer or a doctor or something. Uh, we're also currently working on green energy education training. Um, and the uh, Clicktack County Public Economic Development Authority Board just authorized the uh, use of point oh nine dollars, which is a state um, call it a rebate to the county for poor, poor counties. So this is state money that comes back to the county to use for economic development. Uh, they authorized that money to be used to hire another economic development employee because the way we uh, have done the math, the employee we have has essentially brought in about two million dollars for the county in the last year. So if we can hire one more of those and bring in another two million dollars for the businesses in this county, I see that as a positive. So I would uh, add all those things together, and those are just what I can think of off the top of my head to prove your, we have not done anything to improve the economy as an absolute non factual statement, sir. Mr. Wagner, I would say your quote of ignoring the truth and laughing it off as a joke about the batteries, I disagree with you, sir. I believe the batteries are a issue and a potential problem, which is why they are not permitted in this county. Um, and um, why I'm going to a course of higher education uh, as opposed to just reading the internet. Um, so again, I would say your um, statement is non factual and non truthful as well. So I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. I think you did a great job sum, summing most of that up. Um, of the first things that came to my mind as well uh, with regards to the economic development that the county has uh, put in. Um, another piece of economic development that we have to think about, every time we build a road, every time when we built this building, um, every time the county spends money, that is economic development. That is the multiplier effect of money that is your dollars being reinvested back in your county. You have to think of the two hundred and fifty plus employees that we have in this county. They buy their groceries here. They spend their time here. They spend their money here. Uh, we are all taxpayers. Everything that we do, why, yes, a good portion of that money or a certain portion of that money comes from your property taxes. Mr. Eldred, I did receive your email and yes, I did respond to it uh, on the same um, line of thought about increasing taxes. Clicktack County has only taken the county portion or roads in the county has only taken the one percent allowed um, by statute. Uh, we have not went out and asked for a tax increase that I can remember of in my memory. We have always lived within our means. You don't see that with all your junior taxing districts. You don't see that with all the other things that our tax money pays for. We're one of the lowest taxed counties in Washington State. Um, so, Mr. Eldred, when you say we are not doing anything, I'd say I'm sorry, that is, that is factually incorrect on many of the things that Commissioner Christopher said, on top of all of the other things that this county does to provide for your safety, your security and the core functions, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's um, the assessor's office, whether, whatever it is, those those primary duties of the county. Right now, we're also going to be starting up crisis services in the next month. And that will be hiring employees that are going to live and work in this county to fulfill a needed position and a needed role. That is all economic development. Sad to say. Uh, Ms. Arnold, I did receive the invite and I wish that I could go, but speaking on that mental health, I will be in a meeting with Melina about the future of mental health in this county at that time, so I will be unable to make it. Um, with regards to the broadband, um, having worked for the county and been the person that worked on broadband, um, you are right, we had a large push about three years ago um, for the state broadband offices' speed test results. And what that showed is is that we have in huge gaps in the county with acts, without access to broadband. Um, I have since went back and looked more recently about the broadband speed tests and what used to be entire big holes in the county that had absolutely zero access to broadband. Those holes are being filled primarily by Starlink that uh, Commissioner Christopher just brought up. Um, because you get to see who the the service provider is. And so anywhere in Clicktack County, someone can have access to broadband that that's near a hundred M bits download with ten to twenty M bits upload. Is it cheap? Absolutely not. It's a hundred to a hundred and thirty dollars a month. Um, uh, can you hopefully in the future get um, for people who are low income, get subsidies for that? Yes, that is something that that we support and that we've been pushing for. Um, on top of that, there's the the cost of the installation. And you know, that's five or six hundred dollars per person or per per residence when you hook it up. Um, do I think that's a large cost? Absolutely. Do I think that is a astronomical cost? Absolutely not. Uh, when I look at what the cost is per person or per passing for fiber to the home, you're looking at eight to nine thousand dollars per passing. Um, I think five hundred um, sounds a lot better if you're the one who has to pay for it. If the government's paying for it, that's a whole different thing. Um, but we are working on broadband and working uh, with, for hopefully grants for fiber to the home. Um, and the county would be the signatory on that grant application. Um, so we are working on broadband. What I can tell you is is that um, the Starlink, you know, the Elon Musk program has completely. has completely changed the landscape in Clickatack County, because now people who want to telehealth or telework are now eligible and able to telework from anywhere in this county. They can have a house 20 miles from the New Year's power and still do that. We are seeing increased pressures from people wanting to move here from the cities, because now you finally have access to internet. So with the good, there come some troubles and some difficulties. But broadband, I believe, is no different than power was in the 1930s with rural electrification. And that's, and I will support the broadband implementation anywhere in the county. And I'm sorry that, you know, it does show that you are served, CAF $2, which were federal subsidies, were used in the Trout Lake Valley, and everyone is supposed to have DSL service. But sadly, the DSL provider can't provide what we would call broadband, which is the FCC minimum now of 25 down and 3 up. With regards to solar and solar batteries, thank you, Commissioner Christopher, for being willing to attend that. I got that email as well on battery storage. I firmly believe that industrial-scale battery storage can, if not done properly, be a safety threat to communities. I'm well aware of the town that had to be evacuated due to the out-of-control runaway fire on those battery storages. And that is why anything that needs to go through the process to install battery storage has, will have to answer a lot of questions and put those batteries in a place that will protect the communities around them. That is part of the process. Nobody has went through the process in Clickatack County. We have not seen that go through the process. But you can rest assured that I have the same questions you do. With what is the setback necessary? How big does a footprint need to be? Where is the prevailing winds going to go if there is a fire? How do you put them out? I've been researching the battery issues, because a lot of things that we are doing in this state and in this statehood on battery storage, if you listen to Governor Inslee, he wants batteries, industrials, batteries in everyone's garage, you know, for the revolution of your battery-powered car. These are all the same batteries. In fact, the batteries that they want to put in a lot of these industrial-scale solar plants are the batteries that they're pulling out of the cars as they're being, running out of time, their life expectancy, because batteries degrade over time. And so that's where a lot of these batteries are going to go. Do I think there needs to be safety measures put in place? Absolutely, just like anything else that we do. Do you need to have safety measures when you put them in your house? Absolutely. I was at a conference just last week where what they're using on these lithium-ion batteries is it's layers of glass, pelletized glass above them. So if the battery catches on fire, it will melt this glass, this little sheet, and then the glass will fall onto the battery, and it'll encapsulate the battery and put the fire out. It's really interesting. That's what they're planning on. That's what they're talking about doing. And the new airplanes that are going to be all battery-powered. So there's nothing worse than being in an airplane and having a battery go out and start on fire. So that's, there's a lot of creative things and revolutions in technology that are coming our way. And yes, we're all interested. And do I mock it? Absolutely not. What I say is that everything in life is risk versus reward. And yeah, there's a battery right next to me. Have they caught on fire? Absolutely. There's a lot of YouTube videos that show people's pants catching on fire from their lithium-ion batteries in their phones. Does that mean that we need to outlaw them or ban them or anything else? No, it means we have to take precautions and we have to ensure that the safety is paramount. With regards to solar and solar ordinances, and, you know, we've been hearing about it straight for two years. What I would like you, and push you to ask the question, Sheri, since you say that you're not talking about banning them. What is the setback from a house or a property line that you would be okay with? So how much of somebody else's property do you feel needs to be buffered for your area when it comes to a setback? When it comes to a setback, say, around a town, does there need to be a different setback from a town? Because the town has a different value than, say, one rural ranch house in eastern Clickatack County. Saying that we need to put a moratorium on these large-scale energy projects. We have one currently, Lunt Hill, that has been processed. We have another one, Bluebird, that if there were true and important safety and consideration concerns, that we should not permit this. I would ask you to comment during that EIS or that process when it comes to the Bluebird project, which I believe has an application in, and make your questions heard. Make sure you ask in the scoping process your concerns, and they will be dealt with. If you disagree with the answers, that I can't tell you. What I can tell you is that whenever somebody gives comments on proposals, the county responds to them, whether it's a building official or the planning officials. We respond to them, and we talk to the experts. And if we don't have the answers, we hire experts, and then we charge the people that are applying for the project. Yep, you sure may, sir.
There is one more statement that was an accurate statement that I would like to point out, that we are continuous increasing spending. So the 2022 budget is the first budget that me and my senior minister Anderson had a hand in building. That budget, we cut $3.7 million.
Yeah, I can't hear Commissioner Christopher.
The, sorry, I didn't have my mic on. In 2022, that budget was the first budget that me and Commissioner Anderson had a hand in. That budget, we cut and lowered from the previous 2021 budget. We reduced it, the 2021 budget, $3.7 million. So that is not increased spending. That is less spending or cuts, or savings, you might call. The 2023 proposed budget by departments and electeds this year is $57.9 million. This board has already reduced slash cut that number to $54 million, and we're still going. So at that $54 million, that is a $3.9 million reduction from the reduction we already had the previous year, and an overall reduction of $7.5 million over two years. So the statement that we are increased spending, I would ask you to look at the budget book, because numbers don't lie. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, we, ooh, we went a little long. Okay. With that, we are going to close public comment and open public hearing. And our first order of business is establishing the 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan for Clickatack County. But I will say, while Jen is walking up here, thank you to everyone in the audience and online who provided public comments this week. We will begin with me finding where we're at.
Trust me, I get off the wrong page and I have to go back to where I need to be for the next one.
All right, so I am going to declare this public hearing open for the purpose of hearing to accept public testimony, both in favor and opposed to the proposed 2023-2028 Capital Improvement Plan. And we will hear from Ms. Bartley.
Good afternoon. So just a little bit, I'm going to kind of give a brief overview of, I mean, the hearings are together, basically. But I wanted to start with this public hearing for the 2023 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, and the preliminary budget. In prior years, this hearing would also include the property tax levy certifications, because we did it later in the year. This year, we moved up the budget process, therefore, the levy certification will not, it'll be done at a later date, after the assessor has time to handle all the tax valuations. The legal notice that was advertised for this hearing was accurate. But inadvertently, the commissioner's agenda on the website had verbiage of prior years. Once the clerk and I realized that the verbiage was on there that stated levies, the clerk was quick to correct that and get it posted, but the legal notice was accurate. As Commissioner Christopher has stated, the board in '21 had charged directors and department heads with 3% reduction over 2020 actual expenditures. This was done in an effort to address the structural gap that all counties face with revenues versus expenditures. And I'd like to remind everybody that we are only able to increase revenues by the 1% that was approved by the voters. But expenditures with inflation go up, well, this last month, 9%. So that is a constant battle, that we are not the only county that deals with that. Every county in the state of Washington deals with that. So the board was aware that those reductions for prior years were extreme for some departments. Some departments are already run really thin, especially the general fund. So they proposed all departments to propose a status quo budget for the 2023 preliminary budget. The total budget expenses departments originally proposed was $57.9 million. After workshops throughout the month of September, between the commissioners and directors and electeds, we were able to adjust, reduce, or modify for now a total budget of $54 million. The '23 preliminary modified budget does include contractual wage increases as well as anticipated cost of living adjustment. Additional changes are the county's insurance carrier resulting in an overall savings to the county, as well as switching the county over from long-distance phone service to voice-over IP for another savings to the county. The preliminary budget is just that preliminary. There are many changes that can be made upon public input and further board discussion. The budget is built on many moving parts that continue to funnel in as I speak, due to workshops continuing in October, the urgent need for behavioral health that is on your consent agenda today, and additional revenue that I was notified of last week. I propose that we continue the hearing until October 11.
Okay, so we have on the agenda the CIP plan, and then there's the budget. Do you want them combined, or do you want us to do?
I think you can take public comment for the CIP separately from the budget, if you'd like.
That's how I was intending to do it.
Perfect.
Okay, so we will start with public comment, both for and against the Capital Improvement Plan. And we will open that up for public testimony. If you would like, give us your name and where you're from, please. You're not required to. And you have up to three minutes per individual. And we will begin, as always, in the room. If anybody would like to provide public testimony on the Capital Improvement Plan, 2023 to 2028. Is there anybody who would like to provide public testimony? Nope. Okay, online. Is there anyone online who would like to provide public testimony on the Capital Improvement Plan? Star six, unmute your phone. Raise your hand. Turn your video on. 0088.
Yeah, Delmer Eldred, Goldendale. And just to clear the record, I did not say that you have not done anything. I said, "Have you done anything?"
Mr. Eldred?
Mr. Christopher, that was my previous. And my second thing is that you people have raised just about everything there is. You're sweeping the corners for revenue. I mean, you've raised the obnoxious weed. You've raised...
Mr., this is a public hearing on the Capital Improvement Plan.
That's what I'm saying is, with all the things that you say that you have done and increased, why do you need to do anything to increase the budget? Because you should be, the money should be there. You shouldn't have to come after more money searching for more revenue in a supplementary plan or whatever you're calling the capital investment. You should have plenty of money.
That's my comment. Mr. Dell, a capital improvement plan is budget money the county is spending to fix things the county owns that is capital projects, like buildings, basements, HVAC units, fairgrounds, equipments. It is a budget that the county is expending or potentially spending to upgrade and repair its own equipment. It is not a source for revenue.
Commissioner Christopher, I know this is difficult, but this is public testimony on the Capital Improvement Plan. We will have discussion afterwards. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Capital Improvement Plan? It is a, if you would hold it up for picture, for the audience. It's a large sheet. You can see it in all the agenda packet.
As well as the budget.
As well as in the budget.
And online.
And online. This is what we spend large dollars on that are considered capital projects. Ms. Baske.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to participate. I did go online, and I saw 187-page document. I'm not an accountant, and I don't understand, definitely don't understand GAAP accounting. I was wondering, you know, just for the public to be educated, could you highlight, could Jen highlight some of the capital or the Capital Improvement Plan, what the expenditures are, so we're educated on what those are? Again, I tried to decipher, and I didn't understand exactly what the county was wanting to do with the Capital Improvement Plan for the next five years. Is there a quick scenario on major things, and how much is that going to cost in the end? What's the total cost of the Capital Improvement Plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baske. Not right now. We're still in public testimony. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony for or against the Capital Improvement Plan? Star six, raise your hand. Turn your video on. You have a background thing.
I know, it's not...
You have to turn your buffer thing on.
Which ain't going to happen anytime soon.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the Capital Improvement Plan? Okay, last chance. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony on the Capital Improvement Plan? Okay, we are going to move to clarifications of any public statements or questions of staff, et cetera. Now, if you would like to let everyone know.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Online, in the document that's posted, the 100 and whatever page, the first two pages following the table of contents is the Capital Improvement Plan. It clearly states capital improvement on the headers and identifies each project, the amount of expense for each project per year. We are not a GAAP accounting county. We are a cash county. And capital improvement revenues come from rate, which is restricted to capital improvement only, so it is funded by its own dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley.
And I will add that this budget packet, or this agenda packet for today, is only 60 pages. It's not the traditional 180 pages. It's only 60. In this Capital Improvement Plan, it only takes up two of those pages. That would be page 11 and page 12. So the Capital Improvement Plan, the proposed repairs by Public Works are replace an HVAC unit at Superior Court for $75,000, paint the courthouse exterior for $400,000, replace HVAC unit number... Replace HVAC unit number five, six, and seven at the West End Building for $110,000. Paint the exterior of the West End Building for $20,000. At the fairgrounds, they want to insulate exhibit building ceiling for 15,000 and replace the main water line coming into the fairgrounds for 150,000 and also a land purchase for drainage improvements of $20,000. And then in parks, the only thing for parks was the Wish Room Park Safety Improvement Project for $25,000, which has to do with insurance coverage for what the insurance company wants us to do for safety down there and including moving swing sets and bathrooms and whatnot. And then the other one is $10,000 for fencing for land purchase, which I believe is the purchase of the land next to the fairgrounds.
That's for 2023.
And that's for 2023. I'm not going to go through all of them because just like the road plan, just because it's on here doesn't mean that we're going to expend it on that year. And just because this is the proposed plan from Public Works does not mean that it's a gimme plan because I've already made mention that I disagree with this plan, that I think it's a failure by the Board of Commissioners to paint the courthouse exterior for $400,000, which yes, sure, needs done, but isn't in dire need. And in the same time, we're putting off replacing the jail roof, which currently leaks all over the equipment until 2025. So it's my opinion, this needs to change. So just because it's posted does not mean it's approved.
Well, that was a clarification if I've ever heard one.
Sorry, sir. You just kind of get the no BS assessment with me. At least my mic was on for that one.
That's true. Okay, I will open it up to further public comment. I don't think there's anything I need, any questions I need to ask. The capital improvement plan is fairly straightforward. I would advise that the community to go on the weekly information and look up the capital improvement plan. And if there's any further public comment, I will open it again in the room and online for public testimony on the capital improvement plan. Ms. Bosque.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Commissioner Christopher. I did open the document and I do see where you're talking about. And I see that was $825,000. I believe that's the total for the 2023, the capital improvement plan. Am I looking at that right?
Yeah, but the page that I didn't read and that I don't know that is in your binder is the beginning fund balance for this Fund 303, which is what this capital improvement fund is. The beginning fund balance of this fund is $613,000. It receives revenue in REIT or real estate excise tax in the amount of estimated $312,000 and change. And then grants in the amount of about 150,000. So total revenues it gets every year is about $462,000 that are used for specifically these items to go with the $613,000 that is in the fund balance to use for specifically these items. So it has a total accumulation of about one, just over $1 million that needs to be used for community or capital improvement fund projects.
Wow, you do a great job. I thank you very much. Let's make it clear. I think I, when I did read the 400,000 for painting the courthouse, my opinion was that the courthouse doesn't look that bad and that seemed like a high price, but it is a big building. And if, you know, the jail roof is leaking, that seems, you know, if it was my house and I needed a paint job or a roof repair, I'd probably go with the roof repair to avoid further damages. So I would agree with Commissioner Christopher. So I would oppose this capital improvement plan at this point with that, with what's listed for expenditures because of, I think that the money could be spent better other places. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony for or against the capital improvement plan? Star six, raise your hand. Turn your mic on. I am not hearing any. Okay. Would you like to leave the public hearing open to written comment for the next, till the end of Friday?
Yeah, I would like to clarify something to Ms. Bosque that she said at the very end before we go.
Go ahead.
You said that potentially use these for other things. I want to clarify that we really can't use them for other things other than what's already on the list. All we're really doing or can potentially do is change the order in which we do the projects. So it's not like we can take the money out of here and go pave the road with it. It's just a matter of what project and what order do we want to do.
Would you like to clarify that, Ms. Bartley?
These funds are restricted. The revenues are restricted to capital improvements.
But I think the clarification would be is that it has to be capital improvement. Not all capital improvements are on that list. There are other things that could be a capital improvement.
Could be put on the list.
Correct. That's, I just wanted to clarify.
So yeah, I don't mind if it stays open for public comment either way. I don't know that we'll get a lot of public comment, but maybe now with a little better education on what it is, somebody wants to sit down and look through it and really spend some time and ask questions and then make a comment. And if they do, I want to hear their comments. So I'm fine with leaving it open.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to leave the public comment open until this Friday for written comments. And we will have a discussion on the capital improvement plan next Tuesday.
I will make that motion to leave the capital improvement plan written comment open until Tuesday. And another, well, I guess we'll discuss it as a board on Tuesday, too.
How about Friday?
Friday.
Close the business Friday so that if there are any comments, it can be.
That's fine. I would amend my, my motion to allow public comment until close of business on Friday.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor of leaving the written portion of public comment on the capital improvement plan open until Friday, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That way, we should all be here next week so we can discuss. Look forward to any other changes you might have, Commissioner Christopher. Okay. Next. We will open the public testimony for the Clickatuck County 2023 budget. We will accept public testimony for and against the proposed budget. And you will have three minutes per individual for your public comment. Is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony on the 2023 preliminary budget? In the room? Online, star six, raise your hand, turn your video on. Ms. Bosque.
Yes, thank you again. I would just start out by saying, again, I did scroll through that 187 pages and it was confusing. And I would oppose the budget at this point. I think that you gentlemen have a lot of work to do in front of you and I appreciate your work. I think that there's some revenue that you gentlemen need to seriously look at. Instead of taking the revenue from the assessed values of assessed property value raising and levies, I'm asking you gentlemen to look at your budget and look at revenue possibility of the tax method for renewable energy and how that revenue can help our county. You are the legislative body and to bring it, it is your responsibility. The budget of our county is very important. And when that revenue is out there waiting to come in just by changing the tax method, which the Department of Revenue says you can, you can use multiple, the combination of the tax methods, and that would highly increase the revenue to protect our county, probably by millions of dollars, who knows? But that's your job to sit down, look at what revenue is out there and stop giving corporate favors and do the highest and best use of tax method to the renewable energies as they are coming into our county more and more. And because of that, I oppose the budget because I believe that our county has a way to bring in more revenue and that doesn't need to be through raising the taxpayers' property assessments and our levies. So that's why I oppose it because I don't believe our county is bringing in the revenue. You're capable, you're capable of bringing in and there's no more excuses. We've done our homework with Department of Revenue. The assessor can change this and you are in charge of our budget and it is missing revenue that it can have. So I hope you go back to work and you try to get our county the due revenue we are owed from these renewable energies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the 2023 capital or county budget? Please come forward, sir. You got, we need to, in order to get it online, you got to come forward, sir. Thank you.
I just have a question. There's a lot of senior people in this county, I'm one of them. And it's getting tougher and tougher because we're all on fixed income. Yet Medicare, the secondary Medicare, I forget what the name of it is now, but it, it's not provided in this county. And people are leaving because they can't get medical. And it's, and it's much more difficult. Is there a way that that, whatever it takes to get included in that program? Because other counties can do it in their state. I don't know if you folks have looked at it seriously because if it sends out senior people, they're the ones that have the experience to teach the younger people how to work and with a long knowledge. So if you have to leave to stay alive, that's not the way to do it. And maybe that can be included in, in a budget or something like that. I think it's a pretty prominent thing.
All right.
I will respond, but I have to do it in order. So gotta give me a minute.
Okay, is that the end of your public testimony? Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public testimony on the 2023 budget? Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on the 2023 budget? Third and final chance, is there anyone who would like to provide public testimony on the 2023 budget? Not seeing any. I will open it for my seatmates for any questions, clarifications of public statements or comments.
Okay, yes, I agree with you, Mr. Sir, and my mother-in-law is the same way. Trying to find Medicare Part B and nobody offers it. Because what essentially it is, is because we are, as a county, a born in poverty county, the insurance companies deem us a fiscal risk. We're going to cost them more money than they're going to make, so they don't want to insure us. Unfortunately, through pressure at the state, we were, or at least some of us, were very hopeful that the governor would push back because he has the ability to regulate what insurance companies can operate in the state. And he can do something by saying that if you provide insurance in our state, you have to be willing to provide insurance in every county of our state because there's a couple of our counties that aren't covered. Unfortunately, him and so far the legislature have chosen not to act on that. Maybe because they get big donations from insurance companies. I don't know. That's speculation. But it does upset me because there's really, at the county level, nothing we can do unless the state insurance commission regulates those insurance companies and mandates them that they must provide insurance in our county if they're going to provide insurance in any county in the state. So I would say it's a good cause. Get in touch with your state representatives, Gina Mossbricker, Chris Corey. Get them back on this issue and there needs to be a change, but not really, it isn't part of our budget, but 100% agree with you because I have a family hurting as well, so.
Would you like to ask any questions or clarify any statements that directly impact the 2023 budget?
Absolutely not, sir.
Okay. Budget 101. Clickatuck County, as was stated earlier today, the county in our budget in terms of raising levies, which was brought up during public testimony, we get to raise the levy 1%, which we chose to do this year, which we have chosen to do every year because that is what by law we're allowed to do. And that equates to roughly $50,000. Where that money comes from, whether it comes from a renewable energy project that's personal property or it comes from your personal house, we don't get to decide that. That is through the assessor's office and that it comes to the assessment. That is not part of the hearing today. But what I can say is, is that we do look for that revenue any way we can. And we do lobby the state legislature to make changes to how that, those assessments with regards to renewable energy is created. With that said, opposing the $57 million budget because revenue should come from a different source within the county doesn't hold a lot of weight for me. We are a budget-based county where all of our departments and electeds give us what they, what they need, what they feel they need to operate. And the county commissioners look at that entire budget book that's sitting over there that's three or four inches thick. And we look at what revenues are going to come in that we reasonably expect because it's a budget. Sometimes the revenues don't come in like we expect them to. Sometimes they come in more than we expect them to. And we do the best we can to try to set the priorities. And so when we take the public testimony on the budget, it's kind of like the capital improvement plan. It comes down to priorities and what the county and the citizens of this county prioritize. And if we hear overwhelmingly that we prioritize senior services and we need to put more money and more effort there, then we will take that into consideration. If we say we need to prioritize or, or the solid waste department, that's what we need to hear is what from the community, the three-inch book, what are the priorities? And that then allows us to make. And that then allows us to make some changes as we go through. Priorities become, in an environment of high inflation, 9% inflation, and you only get 1% more money, that prioritization becomes more and more and more important. You already heard from Ms. Bartley and Commissioner Christopher that we've already cut $3.5 million from the asks of what we have heard from the department directors and the electeds feel they need in order to do what they need to do. We've already cut $3.5 million, because we only know we're gonna have so much in revenue, and it has been this board's decision that we are not going to continue to pull money from the reserves in order to balance the budget. One thing that we have to know and understand is, is that nearly 70% of all the money that we bring in and, you know, that we spend is on people. And so last year, when we cut $3.5 million, we cut no staff that I can recall. We didn't hire staff in the positions that people wanted, that they, that, you know, directors and electeds felt we needed, because we're trying to not deficit spend. But we cut all the little easy things. We expand, we extended the ERNR on vehicles, we did a lot of, you know, cost cutting. Well, this year, we're still, in this budget, about a million and a half dollars of cuts that we should probably be making. It is currently a balanced budget, but that balances by using both more money from the landfill, but also from the fund balance, which the budget is balanced, but you're still spending more money than you make. And to me, and I know Mr. Christopher in the past, that said, that was not a balanced budget, even though it is a balanced budget. So we've got more to do, and that's where we need to hear from the community on what those priorities are, because the next cuts from here on out, as inflation continues, and we only get to raise revenues 1%, is only gonna get worse and harder and tougher to make, and those decisions are going to have more of an impact on the community and the services that we can provide. So with that, Commissioner Christopher.
You opened it up for me. Yeah, I wanted, since you were giving a little bit of an education there, which I think is, is really good for the public, I wanted to add that they heard this 1% number from our financial professional, and you was talking that we can only raise 1%. That 1% is of the property tax. So in the general fund, property tax is essentially $5 million. So if you can raise it 1%, that means we get to raise the tax, 1% of that, or $50,000, which is what they explained. Now, if you do kind of a general math in the county, there's 24,000 residents in the county, so yes, this county is responsible for raising every resident's property tax $2, which again, does not keep up with inflation at 9% or just COLAs, cost of living adjustment for wages, and benefit adjustments in the neighborhood of 350,000. So hence the reason why this county is looking for other revenue sources or better fiscal management, like the finance manager said, changing insurance companies, which Mr. McHugh's online, he asked this question a year ago of what our insurance company costs us a year, and the answer was $1.4 million. The answer to the new insurance company is $800,000. We'd have to pay some gap insurance, what have you. But anyway, there's a cost savings there, because we looked into saving money. We saved money with the cell phone or phone coverage changes. That's what we're doing to try to get by. So we are doing what we can to raise revenues without actually raising revenues on taxpayers. So I have to.
Thank you. Yes, of course.
To go further in depth into what you were saying in regards to the 1.5, the 1.25 that we're still trying to work on is out of the general fund. The general fund is essentially required services filled with unfunded mandates, court services, justice law, those types of things that the state legislation continues to pass down onto the counties to provide with no revenue source to back it. And yes, 70% of the general fund is people.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley. Would you be entertained leaving written comment open until Friday on the budget as well? Well, do you like to make a motion to that effect?
How long are we gonna keep the actual? We're just leaving written comment open, how long are we, when are we gonna have our next hearing? We're just gonna close this before December 31st, right?
I propose, there's some procedural stuff that I have still waiting to hear back on. So I propose that we keep this, we continue this hearing for the statutory five days, business days, so next Tuesday, and hopefully I'll have an answer.
Okay, I think I can do this. Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this hearing five days from now, on Tuesday, the 11th, leaving written citizen comment open until Friday, the 7th of October.
Yeah. I will step down and second the motion. I was just trying to process whether we wanted to leave public, or the testimony open until next Tuesday as well.
Doesn't matter to me either way, I can change the motion.
No, it's fine. I second the motion. Discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I would like to say thank you to Ms. Bartley, to all of our directors and other electeds. Putting together the preliminary budget is a gargantuan task, and you have done an excellent job in making it so that Commissioner Christopher and I can follow along and understand it and have to make those tough decisions. So thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay. And I would like to say thank you as well, and also to the public. Just because we're kind of heard this public hearing does not mean this budget process is over for at least a month or so to come, because we will still have budget hearings, and we will still be making cuts, so.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, Building Director Lynn Ford, Budget Workshop. That's, doesn't that just hit weird? Glad to see you back.
Yes, glad to be back. Glad to be here, you know, two weeks ago.
Yes, you did. You missed out on all the fun.
Oh, darn it. The 2023 Building Department request represents the revision of a board-directed 28.2% increase to fees to rely less on the general fund and shift, shift more of the cost to the actual applicants rather than the general public. It shows an estimated 30% decrease in permits using projections and best guess scenarios of what the market next year will do. There's no good way to know exactly what to anticipate. Planned expenditures include the likely adoption of the 2021 code cycle, purchasing of the 21 code books, public hearings and revisions to handouts, and any notifications we need to make to contractors. We don't have a date for sure of when we will adopt the 21, but it's anticipated to be July of next year. Three staff members will be attending the annual continuing education training after two years of having no education trainings, which keeps our CEUs current and active, and it will cover the revisions to the 2021 code cycle. The training better helps us understand and interpret code and administration of those duties and establishes relationships with counterparts across the state. They have also contributed towards the plans examiner and the permit technician working towards their ICC certification, now that we are able to have some trainings going again. There may be some large commercial projects pending. There are some in the works, but we don't know if that will occur next year, or if it'll be five years from now. The housing market, best we could tell, tentatively remains strong, at least through a portion of '23, because the need for housing still exists. But we anticipate more small-scale projects next year rather than large ones with the economy and inflation and difficulty finding materials and equipment. We will continue, when we're not as busy doing plan review and inspections, continue on archiving the massive amount of files and drawings that we're responsible for. We're, you know, still working on 50-plus years of accumulation, scanning and saving those things digitally. Beyond these, we have no other significant changes that we are planning. We are doing our best to postpone vehicle replacement until 2024 of our secondary vehicle. Lately, we have been sending to inspectors out quite a bit, just because of the schedule being so full, and it has acted up off and on, so we're hoping it'll behave itself. It's almost 150,000 miles, but we're doing our best to not have to replace it until 2024 budget. The rest of our planned expenses are simply the cost of doing expense, fuel, materials, performing our job duties. And that is all I have on my memo for 2023.
Questions? Lot. Go ahead.
Revenues. I don't know if you have that page, or Jen has that page, nobody has that page. Oh, I was gonna throw it online, but we don't have it up there. No, it's fine. I, I understand you looked at your revenues and forecasted what looks like more of a worst-case scenario. But I guess I would say, based on history and whatnot, I don't know that I would have went as draconian as you went. So it is, is my opinion that we bring some of these revenues up a little bit, not necessarily up to what they are currently. But, you know, dropping like the permit fees from 370,000 down to 259, that, that's a big drop, and by my math, it's 327 is about the right number. But I don't know how adequate or how interested the board is about adjusting.
So the 30% was very drastic, but I would prefer to be drastic and have a good surprise versus project maybe a 20% loss and then have it be more. But I will do whatever the board directs us to do and have Cindy.
So in essence, though, are you estimating an even more than that? Because the fees are gonna go up a percentage.
Right.
With, so you're in essence, by my math, is actually thinking about a 50% decrease in permits.
Right. And which we're hoping is not the case, but we have no idea what to expect next year, none whatsoever.
And that's me, I don't mind erring on the side of caution, but to try to expect a 50% or try to forecast a 50% when, I guess I would say during the recession or the housing crisis of '07, '08, '09, it went down a little bit, but not.
Not that much, right.
I don't know, and all of the financial information I've been led to believe is downturn, yes. Red lines and whatnot, no. So it would be my recommendation to boost this a little closer to what I feel would be a potential reality while still being on the low end to provide some safety.
Rather than 30%, drop that to 10%?
I have permit fees, my math came out at 327, 327, as opposed to your, it was, this year was 370. My number's 327, her estimate is 259. So mine would be a reduction of 45,000, hers was a reduction of 110,000. Because I would, like him, was adding the increased fees in there and then removing from there. And then plan review fees. I actually have it 155, you're at 171, you want to drop to 119. I have them at 155. And to be honest, I did the math two months ago, I don't remember exactly what math I used.
Was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
And our report that Cindy ran yesterday, we're actually very good for September.
So that.
Right.
So.
We had like July or something, that was.
Yeah. But we will make those revisions.
On the report and see some commonalities come back, and it's just, every year makes no sense. It's just, it's kind of all over the place.
Yeah.
And I don't see any difference.
We did go drastic. But hopefully it's not even close to that. But we will make those revisions to our budget. Permit fees is 327,000, plan review fees 155,000.
If you guys are okay with that.
I'd say, put a note next to it and say, this was Christopher's, Christopher's ball.
Guesstimate.
Christopher's crystal ball, and we'll see how far off we are. What, I'm fine going with, with that.
Okay. Expenses, you have about 95,000 more of expenses for wages and benefits. What is that? Is that a person, or is that just wages?
Add the change to categories. If Megan gets her certification, she'll be a permit specialist instead of a technician, that goes up a grade.
Does that include COLAs or no COLAs?
I don't think it included COLAs.
That was just current employees going up grade levels.
I'd have to look back, we did it a while ago now.
That's kind of the.
I still have.
Refresh my memory months ago.
Yeah, foggy brain.
Is that, I mean, it just seems like 95 grand is a huge number for just COLAs and grade levels.
We used the little formula calculator.
Yeah, I mean, you used the new one, so I'm wondering if it was essentially just, you know, the old way versus the new way plus the pay grade jumps. I couldn't find it.
Well, and then this year, we had the reclassification of two of our staff members.
Plan examiner and. Right. Two went up.
Two went up, yes.
Right, and then Dave will go up again.
Well, as I said, I could, I could figure out 30, I could figure 30, 35,000 for COLAs and 30, 35,000 for pay grade adjustments, but geez, where's the other 30?
And we tried to.
It just seems like a big number.
Yeah, we tried to figure it out as well, but we were using that online formula, so we didn't know how to.
Last number that was wrong and not the this number.
Yeah, we didn't know how to correct that or, or fix it, because it was that little, you know, the.
I guess, I guess I would say, maybe if Jen can take one more look at that, just to me, she doesn't see anything.
I, when I ran my numbers, you know, based on my round, I round about, I came up with 45,000, is, you know, but I didn't get the extra pay grade from somebody else going up.
Right.
But I still don't see how 45 becomes 90, so just look into it again.
See if maybe it was a calculation type.
Somewhere.
In that formula.
Yeah. Any further questions?
Thinking.
Am I able to clarify something for this year, for, is that going to be?
I should go into next year.
Yeah.
Like clarify?
Okay. For 2022, we've been made aware that when we separated code enforcement out from building, that there wasn't a bars number created for the benefits portion. So that has been coming out of building versus separate from code enforcement. We, I mean, this is what we've been told. And so we don't know for this year, do we? And so we don't know for this year, do we shift anything between the bars numbers of code enforcement and the building department bars numbers? Because we're trying to figure out how much, if any, supplemental we need to ask for. But with that bars number issue, we're not sure which direction to go to finalize our twenty.
We had a conversation about this.
Okay, okay. And that's what I wanted clarification. Is it there for us to use or are we not allowed to? Okay. Is, is recognizing it as? Okay, okay. Okay. All right. That's what we needed to clarify, so we knew how to finish out our year.
What is building IF supplies? Ninety-five hundred dollars up from six thousand last year.
Fuel.
That's just fuel.
We're going farther and farther out to do inspections. And the cost of gas has gotten.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, other questions?
I think that's all I have.
All right. Let's, uh, make some changes and.
We will make those corrections.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Sorry, I was out sick two weeks ago.
It's all right. It's not, it's not always bad to be the last. Okay, let's move on to findings, conclusion, and decision in support of the board's decision Tuesday, September twenty-seventh in the matter of the Clickatack County Code, Chapter two point seven point two relating to land development fees. Mochi, would you like to come forward? If you walked all the way down here, you gotta come to the hot seat.
Just in case you have questions. So attaching your packet is a draft ordinance capturing what we talked about last week for the fee amendment. And the draft ordinance has been revealed and approved as to form by the prosecutors. So if, if that is consistent with your motion, then please go ahead and sign the ordinance.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Did you have?
Been, been reviewed by the prosecutor, which is what I was looking for.
That's only reviewers to.
I know.
And I want to point out that this is in fact January third, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you're online, uh, make sure you get all of your stuff done before January.
I know. I got a boundary line adjustment I've been debating on whether I wanted to do for the last, I don't know, two years, and now this might push me, push me into making that decision.
Okay, um, we asked to bring the findings and conclusion. We don't need a motion to, oh, we do need, we need a motion to sign it. Would you like to accept? Yeah. Yeah. My computer. Yeah, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, if you're looking for a motion to accept, the matter of changing Clickatack County Code, Chapter two point seven two relating the land development fees, correct? Or you want something other than that motion? Cause I don't have it in a packet here.
Conclusions.
I have to find it. That's the thing. Got it. There it is. Oh, right. Oh, there it is. Uh, all right, I make a motion to accept the findings, conclusions, and decision, uh, just in support of board decision of Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and two, in the matter of Clickatack County Code, Chapter two point seven two related to land development fees.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? Thank you, Mochi, for all your work you put into this. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the findings, conclusion, and decision, um, for two point seven two land development fees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your hard work, ma'am.
Okay, next up, Department Update, Senior Services Director, Aaron Carter.
Sharon, Sharon, Sharon.
You only do it for her.
I'm gonna wind up today.
I know. And you don't even drink Red Bull anymore.
I did this morning, my first one in a month.
Oh.
My last one in the fridge.
Don't die on me now.
Okay. So I just wanted to provide, um, some updates from my last update about some, specific to transportation. So, um, last update talked about the, um, Columbia area transit applying to the consolidated grant program to do some weekend fixed route service for Benjen White Salmon because they already operate weekend service, uh, in the gorge on the Oregon side. And there had been requests for this, but, um, we don't have the capacity within Senior Services Mount Adams to do that. So we did, um, meet with CAT as well as the Benjen and White Salmon City officials, and they actually, um, are supportive. They're willing to provide the match funds to do that. It's, and it's just a summer service, um, so summer weekend service, uh, that they will be applying for, and the city of, um, Benjen and White Salmon will provide that match, um, funds, the match funds to be able to do that. So that will be able to provide, um, and will be able to communicate with folks about that, that option for that weekend service. They did do a trial. They had had some COVID funding last summer, and they did a, a summer service kind of last minute, and that, they had really good results from that, and I think that's in part why we had people requesting, uh, to do that service. So this is something where we'll be able to have, um, some additional service for, for folks, but that's not gonna be any funding out of, um, Clickatack County specifically, um, for that. Uh, and that's if they get the funding. So, uh, that grant application is due this month, uh, along with the other ones, and so the other item, I had a, a request from actually KVH, Clickatack Valley Hospital, if we would be able to pursue a, they feel like they would benefit, that we could benefit from having a bus shelter at, uh, Clickatack Valley Hospital. Um, and they had asked if potentially we could, um, Mount Adams, you know, Senior Services Mount Adams could do an application to the Wash Dot Consolidated Grant Program for this, where they would actually, though, provide, um, the match for permitting installation and, uh, the match funding to be able to do a shelter. And so that's one of the, I guess, the questions, is that something the board is, uh, okay with in terms of doing that, you know, this application is due the twenty-seventh. I'm working on the other applications for our existing service, so whether or not I could have everything in place, but again, it's not asking for any financial support from the county. They're indicating that they would provide any match or support, but obviously there is my time, uh, in doing that, but there's definitely, you know, a benefit for, for the folks, um, accessing the service, um, to be able to have an actual shelter versus our current stops, which are, you know, sandwich board, Mount Adams Transportation Stops. So, um, I guess that, that's one of the items where I wanted to find out if the board was okay with moving forward with that, if, if I can get what's needed, you know, in time for that application.
Do you have anything else you'd rather be applying for?
Um, no, in terms of, um, there's other things that, based on feedback from citizens, you know, that, and, and there's a list of items within the, the plan, which actually, the Human Service Transportation Plan, that's up, just in the process of being updated currently, and that was one of the items that I have here is, you know, Clickatack Valley Health also pointed out items they feel from the Human Service Transportation that are high priority items needs, and, you know, one of the items that has regularly come up, but we again, don't have the capacity to do so in our current funding, um, is, you know, after hours, um, twenty-four, seven transportation, you know, in terms of dial ride service. So, you know, some of what regularly has come up from, you know, hospitals and providers, is they would like to be able to, to call, um, when they've had, uh, citizens that have been transported, say, by ambulance to the hospital, uh, emergency room, but then they're not admitted, and they need a ride back home. Um, and they don't have family or somebody else that can get them. They've run into, you know, challenges with people being able to get home. You know, right now, uh, they would have to wait till our, our regular business hours to do that. Um, uh, you know, one of the challenges in the past, uh, both myself and my operations managers had made ourselves available with our cell phones after hours and on weekends for calls like that, where we had hospital discharges that needed rides home, and we ran into some real challenges where there were people that, um, where we would call and find a driver that was willing and able, because we don't have the resources to have somebody on call on payroll. And so we had drivers that had expressed an interest in being willing to help out in those instances. But then we also have to go through some protocols in terms of making sure they haven't had any alcohol and expert, you know, because of our criteria, uh, with our, with, you know, FTA and DOT. And then where the barriers ran into is a lot of times we had coordinated, and we have a driver go there, and they would arrive, and the person somehow managed to get a ride from somebody else's home, and they didn't call and cancel, and we expended those resources and time, you know, with exempt staff too, getting calls at all different hours. Um, and then we were, more of the issue came, though, when we were having issues with people that were, we would go pick up, and they really weren't in any condition to be transported with a service that, you know, where we had people that were somewhat conscious, or we got to the home and they. And they.
Going to the hospital.
No, this is home. And, or they were, we would arrive at the home with somebody that, you know, wheelchair transfer, and they had no accessibility into their home. And, you know, when you're talking late at night, middle of night, early morning weekend, it's not like you can easily get, you know, or something else and sit. So we had enough of those situations that I had decided, this isn't working. We're not gonna do this. This was something we were trying to, to help, because it wasn't like it was constant, but we were running into a bit more issues with the status where it was somebody we really needed to be able to evaluate more thoroughly, because we felt there was a potential liability issue too, as well as, you know, kind of health and safety with our drivers. And so we said we weren't gonna be able to provide that, and really sticking with what our primarily hours of operation are, which are typically, you know, seven to seven, um, Monday through Friday with some, you know, obviously we have exceptions and that for that, where we've got people that have surgeries and things, and we've coordinated transportation. So typically, what we've indicated to, you know, hospitals and providers is that they would just call us that next morning, and then we, we work out what we can in terms of transportation. I mean, I think the other issue is wanting the on-demand kind of medical taxi service, and we don't have the capacity to always have a vehicle and a driver on standby. So there are times that we do get calls even during business hours, um, from hospitals or medical providers, and they're like, this person needs a ride, and we say, okay, we could do it, but it's gonna be two hours from now, because, you know, that's when we have a driver available after this other ride, and it's like, no, we need them to go now. And it's like, well, we don't have that ability to on-demand. And so, so I know that's, you know, obviously there's issues that have come up, I think, too, with, with folks that have had, you know, mental health crises and transports. Uh, again, you know, we're available, and really, we really work to try and make, uh, help people and get things arranged, but we, we don't have that would take quite a bit of money to have a person and a vehicle on standby twenty-four, seven. So I don't know how realistic it is to do that even with some support, so. And then the other item that, you know, people have requested is more of a connection with our fixed route between, you know, that gap that runs is between Dow's Port and Benjen White Salmon, because right now, you know, the routes are Golden Dell to the Dows via Wishram and Dow's Port, and then White Salmon, Benjen, Hood River. But in terms of our discussions and budget, was that that wasn't something that, uh, the board was supportive right now of looking at something that was gonna cost more money. Uh, but, I mean, because even continuing existing services will cost more money, given that, uh, the cost of, uh, staff, wages and benefits and fuel and all that is increasing. So the best shelter isn't gonna be, you know, it's not like it's a huge, if they're indicating that they would provide that match, um, the issue is, is whether I can get all the materials, even get a full application together by the twenty-seventh, but wanted to make sure the board would be supportive of moving forward with that, because you're the ones that give permission for what I apply for.
My personal opinion is that it would be nice to have a bus shelter in every spot. You have a little sandwich board sign. It's just a matter of whether the county can pay the ten thousand dollar match kind of thing to do it, or whatever the cost is. So if KVH or somebody else is interested in covering that match, uh, I am more than happy to, um, well, I was gonna say more than happy to direct you to spend your time, uh, to write the grant, but to ask you to spend.
Just the part.
Okay. If, if, if you can get that in the years.
Okay. Great. Um, and then, you know, there is, is a request that I'll be, I'll be looking at to see, um, time on the board's agenda in the future months where, um, Kathy Fitzpatrick with, um, McCad and is the Mobility Manager for our region, and that too wants to kind of provide an update to the board, which she's done in the past regarding some of the strategic planning on transportation within the gorge. And some of the work that's going on with that, um, because they're looking at a number of different, um, areas that, um, and they just kind of wanna update as that's going forward. So I think, um, she was looking at probably December, wanting to come and just chat and provide some updates. So I'll be looking at some dates for that. Um, uh, the other item I wanted to just add is we, we have two openings on the Senior Advisory Board currently. Um, Cindy Blumel, who, um, is in, was in Lyle, actually relocated to Prosser, Washington, moved out of the area, so that opened up, uh, a position there. So we, we do currently have three representatives for District One, three for District Two, one for District Three. Um, we need at least.
I mean, since I've been here and even beforehand, District Three's been underrepresented on this board, and the majority of the people I've approached and said, hey, by the way, do you have any interest? They're all like, huh, no. Uh, is that historically the way it is?
No, actually, I think we always had a lot more from Golden Dell. I mean, it just cycles with different things, and I think, um, right now, the challenge is, is, you know, volunteers. I mean, just like with recruiting paid staff, we kind of have that same even recruiting volunteers. I mean, our volunteer levels through the pandemic really went down, and it's, it's taking, it's definitely slow to build back up. Um, I just know a number of the people that I've spoken to that have expressed interest, and when we've talked about it, there are also people that are very involved in a lot of other things, and they kind of say, oh, you know, I don't feel like I can give, you know, that level of commitment. I just have a lot going on. I just think people have a lot happening. So I, I don't think there's any specific reason for that. I mean, um, and, and we.
Still seems to be a lot of really good ideas and not as much motivated.
All the time.
I mean, there's, there's plenty of volunteers, but there's plenty more people that wanna tell the volunteers how to do their job than there are actually volunteers. And that's unfortunate.
Yeah. So we'll definitely, you know, still continue to, you know, try and get the word out, encourage people, but. But I didn't know if you had anybody in mind. I mean, the bylaws have indicated that typically we want at least two from each district. So we would definitely, one of those would need to be, you know, it said, doesn't say it has to be two, but it, the preference is to definitely fill that. Where there's more of two from each district, but, um, a total of nine we want. So with advisory board, though, we've usually been happy with anybody that wants to, you know, commit to having that time and, and give feedback. But we would certainly like, and I know I did have a couple, we had a couple of people that came from Golden Dale last meeting. Well, one person that came had somebody she was trying to get to volunteer. And, but they decided they weren't again, ready to commit to, you know, doing it. So, and we are doing, you know, Zoom slash in person. So if a person doesn't feel comfortable and want, and we've been also rotating the sites. So that people have an opportunity to have it in. One of the three, you know, areas, Goldendale, White Salmon and Downs Port, so.
Yeah, as far as, I mean, being the district three commissioner, I would like to make sure we reserve at least one of those two spots. For a district three person, if a district three person comes forward. But if there's somebody from somewhere else that wants to take one of the three spots, I'm fine with that. Because you need adequate people on the board and with the history we have, uh, as long as we leave one stop spot open, I'll keep shopping. Maybe we'll get something. That's my opinion.
I, we already have three from one and two. I'd prefer if we get two from district three, it'd be my preference. So look hard, turnover rocks.
Yeah, and I, you know, I can also maybe check. Bickleton Market Street Cafe, the Market Street Cafe owner, we're looking at reopening. You know, they've done a meal there and it's been with COVID and right now. We're looking at resuming there and maybe some of the people that participate, we might get somebody from.
They can, if they have access to be able to have a good enough internet to stream. Where they can come on a zoom, that might work.
Or in person, you know, some folks might want to.
Drive that far, especially all winter long, but.
All the way to White Salmon.
Yeah, if they can, if they can, uh, do it remote via zoom, I think they're game.
Yeah, and then they can also call in. I mean, it can be, because the zoom has the option for a phone call. Because we have had that issue with Glenwood and stuff like that.
We have to go to the senior center on a Tuesday when they're doing meals and just, uh, hand out. Rocks and whoever draws the two painted rocks gets to be on the, you're in. You know what, show up and find out.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's it, unless you have anything for me.
I'd say if you have time and you want to apply for that, go ahead.
Okay.
It won't conflict with CAT applying, is it? They're not applying, are they applying for the same dollars?
Well, I mean, in a sense, um, because they're with the consolidated grant program, there are a certain number of project ranking. You know, there's, they, you get ranked, you get more points for certain ranking of projects. But typically the projects that with the RTPO and RTC, they. It's been the tradition to existing projects, get those high rankings and operations. And so, um, but again, even when we've had, you know, we've had projects that have had a low ranking in that. Because we've had a lot, there's been a lot of applications, we've still received funding. Because it's just a portion of that, the scoring. And so I don't think, it, it definitely wouldn't affect our actual dial right operating and our, our fixed route operating service. And from what we've again been told is that they feel like there's some additional funds available, uh, in this go around, but.
My next question is, is, um. So right now CAT doesn't come across really the river, correct, to our side? It's all, it's all Mount Adams. But with, if they get this grant, then CAT's going to be coming into White Salmon and is that going to. Muddy the waters in terms of when people think that, you know, there is service and who, what bus and how am I doing, you know?
Well, I mean, they did do it brief, they did it last summer, um, for like July, August and part of September. And, um, you know, their buses are clearly marked as CAT buses. We've emphasized that it's, you know, weekend service that they're doing. We would just still continue to communicate that if they received, you know.
Was it on the same time, time schedule that you were doing it during the week? So people had the, or was it, you know, completely different?
Um, it was different, uh, because it's fewer trips, but it's similar. They are, they, they are providing within kind of, you know, in terms of the similar stops. But our, the weekday service in terms of. Where some of the needs were like within situ or that too, which is part of when, you know, with some of the employer stops. That is different, you know, in terms of weekends. So some of what's been discussed too, though, is, um. Weekend service that one of the requests that had come up with some of the migrant workers that are in White Salmon area. Well, they're actually kind of Mount, Mount, um, Adams Farms out there, Adams Fruit. They often, they were wanting, you know, some transportation on Sundays, um, because that's the day off that, uh, many of the people have. And so there's been some discussion about whether making sure to have a, a. Route that would be able to, to, to pick up those folks on that weekend to get them over and back and forth.
Go all the way up to.
No, not going all the way up there, but going within where they may be able to their. Their van could meet at a closer location in, in the White Salmon Benjen area. So, so there's just discussions related to that. But, um, CAT would be doing six trips, I think, is what they're proposing is doing currently with the Monday through Fridays, Friday service. It's like, we do about nine or 10 circuits. But they definitely will be look, you know, they're in similar locations so that people would be familiar. But they do still have the CAT sandwich board sign. So people know exactly where it's at and they'll do some outreach and, and education about it. Because they currently do the link, like even in the Dows, um, the link only does weekday service. And then CAT does their weekend service out to the Dows.
Can we get ridership numbers on last year to see if it was used and how much use it got?
I do have the ridership numbers, um, that I can send you for their weekends. I got from, uh, because that's part of what CAT will be including is showing that. And that one though, it wasn't, you know, again, something that would have been advertised a lot, but I think. They still had pretty decent numbers, uh, uh, for folks that were riding on with that. But I think likely there would be a lot more with, with some outreach and education. And it has been something that I've gotten a number of emails this year on are people that have utilized. You know, Columbia Gorge Express Service and they wanted to come over to the Washington side, but they got up here and realized, okay, the weekends. I guess I can't get over to Washington because there isn't a service. And so I had a number of emails that we, we actually, even though all of our brochures and our information said Monday through Friday. People were like, well, you need to say no weekends. We have it on the website for gorge translink to no weekend service right now. So people would know that. And then if, if CAT gets the grant to be able to do weekend service, we would be able to indicate on there. CAT is providing weekend service and have that link to that schedule as well. But since they, you know, it made sense for CAT to do it since they operate on the weekends, they have drivers, they have vehicles, they are really coming up. They're just kind of branch over on that one section over to Benjen White Salmon versus us not having, we don't do weekends. We don't, you know, to be able to expand, you know, that, even though obviously, you know, we get requests all the time where people wish we had service seven days a week. But it takes a lot more money.
From the hospital and everything.
And.
And so it's, it's pretty affordable for CAT to be able to do it. And, and so, and then, and then with the cities providing the match for that. Because it's only about, um, 6,000, uh, a year split between, you know, the cities to provide that weekend service. And again, you know, it's a summer weekend because that's really when, you know, we definitely see differences and, and that, that uptick. Is really through those summer months, there's a lot more ridership, you know, we see that with, we've seen that from the start of our fixed route. That actually August is probably the biggest, um, month for ridership. We definitely see big spike.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, um, why don't we do? Would you be, would you want to move, uh, number seven on the consent agenda in the new business? We don't usually have people discussing things if it's on the consent agenda.
True. Yeah, that's what I would think.
Okay.
And then put it, if we still move, put it back on the agenda for next week?
No, you just move it to the new business today from the consent agenda and then they can give a presentation. Since it says they're here.
If you wanted to.
Okay, all right, so let's move to new business. We have two things, uh, we've got the, um, agreement for Beacon Health. Have, is there any discussion on that or are you good with it? I would entertain a motion. It's right on top of the blue card, first thing. That's why I, I did it.
Good call, because I, I missed it down below. Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we accept, uh, the agreement and provisions for services by and between Beacon Health. Incorporated in Clickertec County Public Health Department for the purpose of providing 345,629 dollars in funding. To support the Kentucky County in the development of a local crisis response program.
I would step down and second the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, second thing on new business would be, um, item number, uh, seven. On the consent agenda for the authorization for the sheriff's office to purchase from the state bid contract three, 2023 Chevy Tahoe PPVs. If the sheriff's department would come forward? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Looking around for my backup.
You always show up with backup.
I know. As they indicated, we're coming to the board, see if we can get Tahos this time around. And I'll let Eric and Karen get into the weeds of it. So there's better understanding because to be honest with you, I'm not in the weeds of it, but I do know we have a need, so.
Well, we wanted to come to you guys today because last couple of years, getting vehicles has been difficult. I think last year we waited. Ten or 11 months from when we ordered it to when we got it. This year it's looking like the same thing. And as of this point right now, if we wait until, um, even next week, we could be the point where we may not be able to order anything for next year. Way that they're kind of doing things. So, um, with that, and I was, um. Trying to get information from the dealerships to verify this stuff. I was told by the Chevy dealership that they have some vehicles on site. That we would be able to purchase if we chose to. And so the discussion was is, um, possibly changing this year's to getting those Tahos out of this year's budget. And the vehicles that we have ordered, keep the order and then it would just be. Out of next year's budget instead, since we can't guarantee if we'll even be able to order anything next year.
Really the main reason we need to continue pursuing. Getting the new vehicles is we've got to get these Ford interceptors off the road. We're starting to see an increase in the carbon monoxide issues with the interceptors.
I think we've had.
Are you telling me that Ford has not recalled all those exhaust manifolds on those interceptors?
And they're not going to, and they're not going to pay anything and the lawsuits.
And it's to the point that they're not even making the stock ones anymore. To replace them, we have to do an aftermarket one that's.
The city of Goldendale just purchased brand new interceptors. And you're saying those exhaust manifolds are the exact same exhaust manifolds that are on your old inventory?
No, I believe it, they've, it's a new engine, but my understanding from what I've heard from state patrol is it's just the same issue. That they didn't really fix anything is my understanding, but I don't know the particulars of everything.
So, yeah, as far as our Ford interceptors are going, we've got one Ford interceptor and Rob's here to corroborate this. That we have got sitting in seclusion, uh, from a former employee. That had high carbon monoxide levels. So we cannot, it's part of our fleet, but we cannot touch that vehicle. And then we've had two vehicles within the last two weeks that have had high levels. We've had the issues corrected, one to the tune of forty-two hundred dollars, the other one to the tune of eighteen hundred dollars. So we're just going to start seeing higher bills.
But once they're fixed, they're fixed, are they not?
No.
This is the second.
One of them, yeah, one of them, it's the second time this year. It's because of, uh, they're impacting stuff that because of how low the exhaust hangs in the vehicle. That basically anything you, it's in the road, if you run over it, it'll hit something that caused damage somehow.
So if you run over something, if you hit something with a high beam, uh, high over something.
Low clearance, but, but the thing is, we're not unique to that. WSP, uh, other agencies throughout the state faced with the same problems. I would never want another, one of Ford's products such as that. Not only we run the risk of the carbon monoxide, but we run the risk of. Disabilities. We have one employee that's, uh, under that issue. State Patrol has another employee that's been off for two years.
He's been longer than that, I don't know for sure.
Anyway, uh, he sued Ford, got nowhere, uh, because they have a bank of attorneys that deal with that all the time. And, uh, we're getting no response out of, uh, Ford, uh, making it right. So we are kind of holding the bag and trying to Band-Aid these cars together to fix the carbon monoxide. And just a few months down the road, we have another problem with carbon monoxide. I'll never be so happy to get those rigs off of, off of our inventory completely and.
How many do we have left?
I think we got.
There's four or five still on the road. Yeah, four still on the road, but we have, I think, two or three as backup vehicles for other people, I think.
And those are also working on getting one guy repaired, so.
Thank you.
See, the one thing I do like about. The Ford interceptor is they don't change the body style for decades. So when you get a new one every three years, you can take your light bulb off and put it on a new one. What you guys are currently buying, you don't get to do that because they update the body style. So all the 40 grand worth of stuff you're putting on every car in three years is going to probably end up being a new body style and you won't be able to reuse that. Ford interceptors, same body style.
Put on here, which ones you plan on.
I tend to agree with you on that, except if they can't fix the carbon monoxide situation. And that's not to say.
The ones that you're going to be replacing with the three new.
End up having problems. And, and Ford won't stand behind it and we're throwing good money after bad money, basically.
My point is, I'm, I'm under the understanding that the exhaust manifold problem got fixed with the engine upgrade. In the new body style.
You may be correct on that, I don't know.
So you, but you're talking about Tahos. You want to buy Tahos, not the Rams.
Right.
So where are the Tahos going to go?
What's listed on the bottom? We just replace the Rams.
But you're going to keep the Rams on order?
Well, yeah, because next year we'll just replace.
It would be for, for next year's.
So the Tahos are going to replace the, the 2017, 2018 and 2017 vehicles, the first, first interceptors. twenty seventeen vehicles, the first first interceptors. The, the, okay, so now the Rams, where are they going to go?
Next.
Next year, what are they going to replace?
The last interceptor that's on the bottom of that list.
Okay.
And then the next oldest vehicles that are beyond that list.
And we still got to get a range timber deputy, right?
Yeah, because some of them would go up to either administrative vehicle or timber deputy vehicle or something like that, so.
So we have this one?
Right.
And then we have a new tire that needs one, so.
Yeah.
You'll look at this one.
My my biggest problem with this is that you want to order essentially twenty twenty-three vehicles today, and we are in the middle of an election that we don't know who the sheriff will be. And that sheriff might be you, might be somebody else, might have a different opinion for what vehicles they want to order in twenty twenty-three. So it is my opinion that we should wait and see who wins that election before we mandate what we're doing in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and so in twenty twenty-three, there will probably be no vehicles. Because the state bid says we need to order within the next month, if not sooner, because there will be no vehicles.
That's coming from the manufacturers.
And that's why we wanted to run it by you guys and get your opinion. But I understand what you're saying.
I think we need to look at the long-term liability. If one of our deputies is in a patrol vehicle and starts having issues with the carbon monoxide, he passes out and he wrecks and he kills somebody, we're looking at even bigger lawsuit than what we're paying out in a new vehicle. I think that's what we're all looking at. We're looking at the long-term liability and the safety for our deputies.
Yeah, you know, politics aside, we're here to put it on the record as a request. You gentlemen will make the final decision.
So we put, when did we put the vehicles on order for the twenty twenty-two Rams?
That's in January.
Yeah, I think it was either end of January, first of February.
And our plan was to have those this year?
Correct.
And our most, and it's not likely going to be until when?
Last year it was, I don't think we actually received them until January.
Okay, so what I don't want to have happen is go out and buy three Tahos today and then have three Rams show up in December that we have to pay for in the twenty twenty-two budget that you don't have budgeted. That won't look very good.
My concern too with it.
Okay, the other concern, I thought the the last you'd said that you were going to buy all trucks, I didn't know you were planning on buying.
A mixed bag, trucks and Tahos.
Trucks and Tahos, because, so right now your Tahos are for your, just your sergeants, right?
Well, sergeant, and and it can go to the patrol, traffic and so forth.
And I think it's just that's how it worked out when we ordered them is who got them.
Okay, I didn't know if you just had a certain vehicle for sergeants versus somebody else. So is there any way to ensure that we don't get our Rams until twenty twenty-three?
I could request to the dealership that if they come in in December of just waiting until January to actually take, you know, to receive them.
Okay, and then?
Since I have another question with the increase in cost, do you have enough money currently in the VRNR to cover the increase in cost, including the increase in stuff you're putting on them?
We'll probably have, we will probably have to go to increase in the VRNR.
You mean?
Hold on.
So this year, I don't know how much, you didn't show me, I'm sorry, how much the Rams were that we were planning to get? So for the three Rams that we budgeted for VRNR?
Yeah, it's on, Eric had it.
If you're, what was in the budget for this year?
Trying to bring it up, my computer's been holding.
We originally had three hundred and nine thousand available for this year.
Just going to find the white paper here. All right. So the vehicles we ordered, to order them and outfit them and everything was two hundred and forty-nine thousand.
That was for the Dodges, right?
Correct.
And you had how much in your fund balance? Was that two forty-nine? You said you did three oh one or something?
This was, this was reading three oh nine.
Three oh nine.
So the new vehicles that you're planning to purchase that you're asking for are going to be three oh nine?
No, that's that's what was budgeted in the budget.
Okay, budgeted, I'm just trying to, because it says previous twenty twenty vehicle cost, new vehicle cost. Yeah, it says previous twenty twenty-two vehicle purchase cost for the three vehicles a hundred and twenty thousand ninety-seven dollars.
That's just for the, that's just to buy the vehicles.
Not all the toys that go on the car.
Right.
Or.
Not the.
New vehicle cost is one fifty-four. But does that include? So the previous twenty twenty-two vehicle cost for the three vehicles is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But you had, your request was three oh nine in the twenty twenty-two budget for the total cost, okay?
Designations.
Right. And so you're going to, you're going from twenty twenty-two, three oh nine that you have on order and you're hoping to get it in for two forty-nine for twenty twenty-two? Is that what you're saying?
The the three oh nine was what was just put in the budget when you were figuring out the budget last year. The two forty-nine was the actual cost when we placed the order of what it would cost to purchase the vehicles and outfit them.
And that was for the trucks?
Correct.
Okay, and the the total cost for the three that you're hoping to, that you were asking to do this year?
I I tried to factor in changes in, you know, a ten percent inflation cost with everything for like equipment. And with that and the vehicle price, it came to two sixty-three or just under two sixty-four thousand.
Now, the Tahos are more expensive than the Rams.
Right. And and I did look at if, say, we were to place an order for what the the pricing they're calling for the possibility for the Nick for the pickups next year and cost-wise, it's, I think it was only a thousand dollars difference per vehicle compared to the Tahos or say if ordering pickups.
So I guess my, my issue that I'm looking at is when you look at the time and mileage on the vehicles, right? We're going to have three vehicles at the end of this year that we were expecting to have at the end of this year, whether they were the Tahos or the Rams. But then our Rams are going to come at the beginning of next year versus the end of next year. So in essence, that's an, almost an entire year that you're bumping up your schedule and that has a value. It's not a cheap value, it's an expensive value. When you look at the overall cost of, you know, your fleet and managing that fleet, I fully hear what you're saying about safety and carbon monoxide and everything else and the issues with that. I'm just trying to look at the the dollars and cents in the ERNR and if you have, you know, have the money available and how much is that going to change the ERNR because now you've you've replaced vehicles, in essence, eleven months before you had planned to, and that's a lot of miles that we didn't get out of those vehicles. Understand what I'm saying?
I do. Normally, our vehicles were coming in like May and after COVID, due to COVID, now they're coming six months later.
Right. Thoughts, Commissioner Christopher?
No, just the the same ones I have. The increase in budget, the, it's all there.
Where is, so you have one interceptor that you have just sitting there, which one is that on here?
We also have one of our timber patrol trucks.
Oh, that's the seclusion. And did you fix it or it just sat there?
They're not allowed to touch it.
It it's had repairs in the past, but as soon as we were told to park it, then we had to park it and not touch it at that point. So I don't know what it has had done to it, really.
Come on forward.
Any litigation?
Yeah.
Shouldn't be talking about that.
Okay. Sorry, I just didn't have the history on it. All right.
So that's why we're down one in our fleet, so that if we have something go down, that means that we're scrambling.
Okay, because you have one that's in the patrol pool that is currently being used that's spare.
That's our only other spare.
Right.
So if.
And the spares were ones that were replaced in the last two years that we've had to keep because we have to keep something because of other vehicles.
Go down.
Went down and we couldn't repair them.
And I don't even drive one. I use my own rig, I don't even drive a patrol.
And the money is there available as long as we don't? And you have, you have it in the twenty twenty-three budget for three new vehicles?
Right.
And what is the twenty twenty-three budget for those vehicles? What do you have in the?
We were doing a hundred thousand dollars a vehicle. It was three hundred. Jen still hadn't completed the VRNR recalculation. She was working on that at some meeting. We were one of the first in our meetings, and so she was still working on our VRNR.
Are you in favor?
No.
Well, then we're going to have to table this until next week. That's, okay, we will, is there information that you need that would help you to make a decision by next week so that when we bring this up?
I will do some research.
And then you will reach out if there's any information you need?
From them, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Can I get the one one back?
Just, sorry, I wrote on it. And I can keep this one?
Actually, if you can get me a inventory list with current mileages on them, that would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, we will table this until next week. I will look into it as well and any questions I will bring to the two of you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More consent?
I'm ready for consent, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda with eight items pulling number seven.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda with eight items with number seven pulled, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay accounts payroll warrants in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-five cents, and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date ending October third, twenty twenty-two.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, there it is. Okay, board pending. Anything else that you had on your list?
I guess my board pending would be to advise every member of the public listening, or any of the county staff listening, to sign up for lifeline insurance. I received my bill from Lifeline for my little plane ride to Idaho from a heart attack. The bill was ninety-four thousand dollars. So.
Your lifeline doesn't count, cover it?
Well, it covers it. But the 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 risk was, is Lifeline said they weren't going to fly me because their plane was off doing something else and airlift northwest was going to fly me. Well, airlift northwest and Lifeline do not have a mutual aid agreement, so then I would have got a bill for ninety-four thousand from airlift northwest. So needless to say, I have both lifeline coverage and airlift northwest coverage. You can sign up for airlift northwest coverage from your hospital bed right before you fly out. So keep that in mind if you ever find yourself in the hospital. Yeah, the ambulance bill was three thousand, the second ambulance was three thousand and Lifeline was ninety-five thousand, so.
So three.
Make sure you're covered.
Three thousand to get you from there to.
KDH to Goldendale Airport, three thousand dollars. Boise, well, whatever airport I landed in over there in the dark, to Meridian, Idaho outside, I think it's Meridian, right outside of Boise, was three thousand six hundred.
That one, well, I guess it was a little further.
They didn't even give me a burrito.
I would, I would be the first to say, make sure you're signed up for Lifeline.
Well, and that's, that's the risk. So I have the Lifeline coverage through the volunteer firefighter thing. My family essentially had it through, my father-in-law was buying it, but then he had an issue with his credit card, I found out after the heart attack, and the Lifeline thing hasn't been paid for this year on my family's end. Otherwise, I was counting on them to have covering it and they weren't.
Fire, yeah.
Yeah, whoops. That was almost a very major mistake to come up in my house. That's all I have for your board pending, sir.
I think we need to have a discussion Thursday. Who would you like to have come back for budget discussions? We have.
I don't think we're picking the individual people to come back. I think this is a time for the board to discuss exactly what you're asking and work with Jen and try to decide who we would like to see more of or all get on the same page because if, if, say, I have an issue with a line item on a budget, there's no sense calling the person back if the other two don't have a problem with it.
Well, there's still a good reason to call them back and that's so that you can feel good about it and get the answers.
If we want to make budget changes as a board, then I'm fine with offering those changes that we're going to make back in the public eye, but until we get a quorum, I'm not necessarily ready to call anybody back.
And that being the case, Jen, how long do you think that Thursday is going to take us?
I think, I think we know where we're going to start and where our focus needs to be, and that would be the general fund. So I would imagine maybe a half a day.
Okay, just trying to make plans.
Yeah, no, I get it, I understand. And it would be the finance team and and the board, just kind of hammering out some details, ask us some questions and figuring out who, if we need some departments back, who we need to call back in and then we can get, link a list and we can schedule for the next Thursday workshop.
Okay.
That works.
That'll work.
Okay.
Anything else for the good of the order, sir?
I do not have anything.
All right. I would entertain a motion if you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the regular meeting, noting that we do have a workshop starting at nine AM on October sixth.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor of adjourning until Friday or Thursday morning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone who made it all the way through the day, all eighteen that was left. Thank you and have a good day.